Good afternoon. Want to call in the session, the July 13th, 2022 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Want to welcome all of our guests and folks that are in the chambers today and those that are following us virtually, either by phone or by live broadcast. And we're going to go right into it and call our role. I know we've got folks that are on some tight time schedules for presentations and we've got a couple of folks that are going to be speaking on off agenda items. And with that, Flo, I'll have you call the role, establish a quorum, and we'll make some brief announcements, do the pledge of allegiance, and get underway.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, July 17th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first come, first served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments to each agenda item or call for off agenda matters. And when the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time and your patience is appreciated. You may send written comments to email@boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the meeting record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Flo. And since you did such a fine job in the announcements, would you please, in the pledge of allegiance? So.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Again, as I noted, we do have some visitors on some off agenda items. And so first, I'm going to go to, Mr. Tom Martinez is here on behalf of the Cal Expo Board and Staff. And I invite Tom to come to the dais. I know that he got short notice, but this is, the end of this week is the start of our state fair. And since we're the host community for our state fair, it's always appropriate that we get a chance to get a preview. I know today's media day, so again, I guess you got the short straw to come before the Board of Supervisors, but we're glad to have you and you got a pretty good viewing audience. We've got 10 or 12 people to follow us on the Channel 40. So anyway, Tom, I'll turn back to you, so.
Supervisors, thank you. I'm filling in for Rick Pickering. This was a last minute addition. I want to thank you for that, to be able to be included and address you on behalf of Cal Expo, but more importantly, the state fair. This is going to be a little different. I'm really quick compared to Rick. Rick will give you the history of wheat and where it's grown and how it is translated into alcohol and beer.
This is recorded.
Okay, yeah. So I'm going to take a different approach. This might be a little different, but I really wanted to come here to thank you and acknowledge some people in your team. Why am I here to thank you? Which most people don't know is like, years ago, we started on a new partnership. Once COVID hit, you know, most public venues shut down. We transitioned into something that we didn't know where it was going to go. I'm talking about the addition of trailers to help those who were unhoused, to keep them, to try to keep them out of the throes of the pandemic. Additionally, after those 63 trailers, we've set up what became to be one of the largest COVID testing sites in the state of California, still is. And then we had two mega vaccination clinics, one in coordination, the first, in coordination with your team. I just want to take a second on that because it's often overlooked. I found them not only to be professional and dedicated, they care, but they're customer service oriented. In a difficult environment, we kind of developed a mold. Honestly, every week we seem to improve it, but they were a pleasure to work with. And we kind of set out in this partnership, which we didn't know where it was going to go. And I felt like we did a lot of good for not only the county, but for the neighboring counties, as most of the employees, as you know, from neighboring counties come downtown to work. And they got vaccinated or tested at Cal Expo. So I wanted to just make sure I got that out there. You guys and your leadership on the matter, I think together, I think you would acknowledge this, that we actually did a great job. It's still continuing. Yeah, we did kind of shut down the testing site right now because there's, you know, a bunch of rides coming in and vendors coming in. But, you know, our payroll, as you guys know, we lost a lot of our payroll during COVID. We went from 70 something full-time employees, maybe 800 something part-time employees, down to just less than 40. And we did all this work with you guys with less than 40 employees. We now have, fast forward to the state fair, and we've just hired 700 employees back into the payroll, additional vendors, another thousand or so. And we're going to track the number of other community acts. As some of you may know, we have some community acts that come to the Cal Expo. But in all, we typically receive 57 of the state's 58 counties entering the state fair competitions. And those winners typically come here. Yes, they come here and they stay in your hotels. Yes, they eat at, not only at Cal Expo, but they eat elsewhere and they get gasoline. So we are going to do our best to incorporate some of the things that we learned during this pandemic, that we learned from your team specifically. Well, Cal Expo will, state fair will have hundreds of thousands of people visiting. We're going to have some new additions and you're going to see more hand washing stations, something we picked up early on and during the pandemic, hand washing stations. And yes, where would we be without hand sanitizing stations, right? We all get the dry hands afterwards. But it's something that we've, we've become accustomed to. So we've gotten into the business of buying large amounts of hand sanitizers and we're going to have some routine washing down or wiping down of public, common public areas as well, rides and stuff. So we're incorporating some of these things. It may slow down rides a little bit, you know what I mean? But it's for, we feel like it's for the best. We've also instituted some security measures. I just wanted to touch base on these. We've gotten, asked a lot of these questions today during our media day. It's not lost on us, all the things that are happening in the community, not just, you know, in the evening nights. We also have acknowledged just how things have changed over the past couple of years. And so we're incorporating some additional security measures, most notable like a clear bag policy, which we already have at Golden One, at the River Cats Games, and already at our soccer stadium as well. So we're incorporating that. That should, that should move the lines a little faster. So just for people who bring backpacks because they come in Lyft or Uber, we have a bag check valet that will now be incorporated in our two, two of our largest gates. So basically, you walk up, you put your bag on there, they'll give you, they ask you for your phone number, they'll plug it in, you'll get a text and a code. And everything's kind of like, there's no cash exchanging hands. It's a $5 service, but we feel like if you want to like, bring your jacket and glasses and whatnot, everything in your bag, you can go back out as many times as you want to get your, put stuff back in and take stuff back out. Something, we're going to see how it goes with the public, something new. So some of these health measures and security measures we're incorporating, it will, as you'll read and hear more and more often, it will be the safest square mile. You know how many officers we have. On any given day, you'll have 80 officers and who knows how many more security guards in place as well with our metal detectors and magnometers to warn people even after they get through. So we're checking for all those things. And just like that, you know? Is that my time? Is that my time, Dan? So I just briefly wanted to touch on some of the things that we normally wouldn't have mentioned during COVID or before COVID. So some things that changed, yes, there'll be bacon wrapped Snickers or something like that. There'll be some crazy foods. There'll be wine slushies and stuff. But I just want to let you know, the price, we never, we never changed it. It's still $14. And where else can you go beginning this Friday where you could see motorcycles doing backflips while having a wine slushie or a corn dog? Where else can you see thoroughbred horses racing just feet away from you while having another cold beverage and maybe another corn dog? Now, if that isn't enough, during the hot afternoons, you could also go visit more than 100 exhibits in our air conditioned buildings, which our buildings have new air conditioners now since COVID. I'll get more on that later. So just to continue that, if that doesn't do it for you, witness one of the most loudest singers you'll ever hear in Shaka Khan on our main stage as well, while you're enjoying another wine slushie or beverage. And our new wine garden, by the way, is twice the size. Wait till you see it. It's been remodeled. It's, you're going to, you won't believe it. It looks totally different. Lots of investment in there as well. And if that doesn't do it, conclude your night by watching fireworks, eliminate the sky while enjoying a funnel cake, perhaps. All for $14. Where else can you get that? It's, it's the deal. We want to bring people here. We want people to come here. We want people to compete. We try to keep our prices down as long as we can. And yes, we're in the business of making memories, so hopefully we'll make a lot this summer. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Great. Well, Tom, I think some of the supervisors may want to weigh in, but again, we, we thank you for the, for the work. You've got a pretty good concert lineup in addition to Shaka Khan. I guess that's the opening night, but you've got Guess Who, Los Lonely Boys, Casey and the Sunshine Band, Clay Walker, Queen Nation, it goes on and on and on. You've got, every night, you've got some entertainment, quite a variety there and different days. The horse racing, so will that be for all days of the run or is that just for a portion of the, of the meat? Will that just be a portion of the run?
Great question. Our thoroughbred horse races run Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Okay.
Just so you guys know, what's different also is we have about 500 to 600 thoroughbred horses in our barns. Why is that Golden Gate Fields closed down? All those trainers, all those owners, they're all moved here to Sacramento. They're in the hotels over by Cal Expo, watching over their horses being trained. So yes, thank you for that question.
A lot of economic stimulus and again, a lot of fun and memories, they say, but there's also a lot of economic stimulus. So let me go back colleagues. I've got everybody up on the board here. So I've got Patrick Kennedy and Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Serna, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom, first of all, you sell yourself short. You were just as long as Rick. But I do want to thank you. And we've met out on site about the homeless issues and, you know, Cal Expo, whereas you don't have to. You have your own appointed board. You were quasi-state agency. You didn't have to step up and you did. And so I want to give you that public credit for that. As somebody who quite literally grew up at the state fair in so many ways, that made me very proud to be Sacramento County where we, we housed the, the state fair. How's the farm doing?
You're not going to believe it. It looks great. Yes, after a couple of years, it was. It needed an upgrade. It's got the upgrade. Right now, people are still working on it. It's, it looks almost new again.
Well, once again, if there's anything I can do to help, reach out to my office.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Great. Thanks, Patrick. Rich?
Well, thank you, Tom. It's, it's great to see. I'm so glad you were able to squeeze us in. You've got a lot going on right now to get ready for the opening on Friday. And I've just, I've gotten to know you a little bit since I took office and it's been a real pleasure to learn about everything that, that Cal Expo is doing to support the Sacramento community and the state. I mean, there's a lot of things that you could have talked about, other ways that Cal Expo assists with our emergency response, both regionally and statewide. But one other thing, area where you teamed up with the county was for the Refugee Resource Center that you stood up with FEMA. And so I want to thank you for that as well, for Afghan refugees. And that was, I think, a really great success. I had a question for you. You mentioned 57 of the 58 counties are represented. Who is not, who does not participate?
Alpine. Population 1,542.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess.
Kamaklauchie High has a bigger population.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. They wouldn't bring much to the local economy, I guess, if they participated. But I just, I'm very, very excited about the state fair this year and everything you've implemented in terms of, of health and safety measures. I think those are all very prudent. And if you have, certainly if you have a last minute cancellation on the concerts, we, you know, we have, there's a local band here unsupervised that could probably, you know, fill in.
Pretty tough to get, though. I don't know.
We did, we did play, I think it was 2015, I think we did play on one of the, one of the stages. It wasn't the main stage, but yeah, so that's part of our, our trophy case.
We'll have to have a repeat of that one. But I will be out there at least two days and look forward to seeing you.
Please do. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Phil?
So I'll just pile on, Tom, and thank you and Rick and Abstentia. I've had the good fortune of representing Cal Expo in District One now for going on 12 years. And as was alluded to earlier, it's not just the state fair, which is what, a couple of weeks out of the, out of the summer each year. And it's so glad to, it's so wonderful to, to hear that we're coming out of the pandemic with, I think, a healthier environment at the, at the fair. But in addition to the fair, all the other community investment that Cal Expo represents and invests is not lost on this board and we certainly do appreciate that. You know, I would, I think, be remiss, though, if I, if I didn't make a plug for Unsupervised at some point to, to come back. That was one of the special highlights of our, our musical tenure and we had a great time. And, you know, it's one of the few times we can both perform and take in about 20,000 calories, so. Thank you.
Can I, can I add something that I know that most people are aware of? So Cal Expo is obviously the backup seat of government. So if something happens at the Capitol, you know where you're going to find us. And you guys have seen us in our emergency response with your local, with your sheriff stations as well, how we've assisted in emergencies. What people aren't, maybe not be aware of is during the two years of COVID, we installed 1.8 miles of gas, new gas line underneath the property. We upgraded our water, we actually have a water treatment facility because we're in the zombie apocalypse, you know? We've got to be ready for that. So we installed a new water system, new water pumps. Yes, we're still watering Bushy Lake. Another bad, another subject on that. But we installed that and we're now looking to do our solar system to be independently, I guess, sustainable on electricity in the event of an emergency. So you got to have heat, got to have water. We're working on the energy component of it, along with the security, so that we're ready for whatever comes up in the future. Because as it looks, emergencies aren't getting less. It seems like they're increasing, as you guys know, in your preparations and planning. What can you do? So we're, we're making all those necessary infrastructure, including new, new roofs in each of our largest buildings as well. New lights, we're trying to become more, use less electricity. You know, even our composting program, like water, water conservation program, we're doing a lot with less. So please do come on out. If you're going to come out and you'd like a tour, I'd love to spend, spend some time with you to show you around some of these new things. But I think you'll be proud of the things that we're doing. And if that wasn't enough, we doubled our entertainment budget. So what you have in here, if you don't notice, we've actually doubled the amount of money we spend on concerts. And we're going to see where this goes. So thank you for the opportunity. Again, my name is Tom Martinez and if you need anything else, please do let me know.
Great. Well, thank you, Tom. Again, and I would thank certainly Flo Evans, our clerk, who reached out. I know I had put a call in yesterday to Rick, not knowing you were in the midst of all this. And her email got through and you got the duty to come here, but we certainly appreciate you being in here. The run is from July 15th through the 31st. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So we look forward to a great opportunity for our community and people, visitors from throughout the state and nation, maybe from around the world to visit our California exposition and all the things you have to offer. And thank you for what you do in the off season, so to speak, which doesn't sound like there's much off season anymore, and for your partnership during the COVID era. And again, we're still, you know, kind of working our way out of the pandemic. And as much as you prepare, I don't think you have to worry about the zombie apocalypse anytime soon. So we can kind of let that set aside. But if it were to happen, I guess you still got some good concert offerings and slushies, so they'd be welcome. At any rate, again, all, all just aside, thank you so much. Thanks to Rick and to your, your board, obviously, that oversees the operations. We appreciate it and for being here on short notice. And hopefully we get you back to your car before you get a ticket. So at any rate.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Thank you, guys.
Great run. Okay. All righty. With that, then, we can go to our, we have another off agenda group of folks here in chambers. I don't know if we have other calls for off agenda items, but if we do, we'll get to them next.
We don't. And, and I just wanted to state on the record, just so there's no confusion with the public in terms of the time limits of speaking, that we have two off agenda matters that I was going to be asking the board to determine the necessity to hear. And that included the state fair presentation. So that is not technically considered.
Okay.
Yet, because there's different timelines for the public comments. So I wanted to put that on the record.
Right. That was a presentation coming before the board. So you got noticed just here more recently this afternoon. So did you need to act on that before we take the next?
It would be nice if we could just get that out of the way and then you can take your off agenda comments. So for off agenda one, I want to bring this to your matter. So pursuant to Government Code 54954.2B, there is a need to take immediate action on an item and the need for action came to the attention of Sacramento County subsequent to the posting of the agenda. First, you need to determine necessity to hear this item and to take action. And then we will need a motion to actually approve the resolution. And the title is, "A Resolution Congratulating Macedonia Baptist Church on the Occasion of Its 72nd Anniversary." So we need a motion to determine the necessity to hear it and then we need a motion to adopt it.
Okay. We have a motion to hear it?
So moved.
Okay. Chair with a second.
Okay. Please vote. Unanimous vote. And then I need a motion to approve the resolution.
So move. Move in a second.
Please vote. Okay, that's done. And for your off agenda matter, we are going a little backwards. Just needed to determine necessity to actually hear this presentation. And that was the invitation to the Board of Supervisors to attend the 2022 California State Fair.
Okay. Since we already did, it's too late to take it back, so we'll.
Yeah, let's just, let's just approve that you guys wanted to hear it.
So move.
Okay, move in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Thanks.
And now we can go into your off agenda comments. And I don't have anyone on the phone as of right now, but I think you have speaker request forms.
We do. We have some visitors in the audience. We're glad to have them. I know that, I just, as a lead up to this, we did, I think, all of us receive a petition in our first speaker day, Mr. Honeypole. We'll be talking to that from folks who reside in the mobile country estates and Supervisor Desmond's district. And so he's here along with several others. So I'll call Mr. Honeypole. And typically you have three minutes. You wanted to allocate 15 minutes for the four of you. Would that be sufficient, John? If I gave 15 minutes for all four of you total?
That's fine.
Okay, good. That's what I'll do. Okay, very good.
All right. Well, good afternoon. And I want to begin with a question. Why do we have to come before you and ask you to enforce and uphold the health and safety laws that are meant to protect all of our citizens? That petition before you, along with this submitted article from the Gold River Messenger that was written by the investigative reporter, Bill Byrd, it details the abuse that the elderly residents at the Mobile Home Park are enduring. And they've been enduring this for the past two years. So where do we turn? Why do the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors? Well, it's simple. Having brought this issue before the Rancho Cordova City Council, the Rancho Cordova Police Department, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, the Sacramento County Metro Fire, and others, all fingers point to you. They point to the county. You're the landlord and the only entity in a position to resolve this and end this abuse. Now, what's the holdup? Supervisor Desmond, when I called your office and spoke with your special assistant, Mark Cullum, asking for relief, he immediately stated, his hands are tied due to this opinion by the Ninth Circuit Court, Boise versus Martin and others. Sir, I have read this line by line multiple times. I got to tell you, I don't find anywhere in here where it states if you can get classified as a homeless person, you may now break every ordinance, every code, every law with impunity. It's not in here. Even when you don't mention homeless, as soon as you mention the encampment on Citrus Road, everyone immediately claims our hands are tied due to this opinion. I fail to see how requiring homeless individuals to obey the laws all others must, how does that constitute cruel and unusual punishment as stated in the Bill of Rights? What about the cruel and unusual punishment that the senior citizens endure day in and day out? Now, yesterday, I received a response to our petition from the Director of the Office of Homeless Initiative. I got to tell you, it was incredulous and I found it somewhat condescending. You know, in this response, you have a debris team. They come out regularly to remove needles and human waste. You stated it right here in the response. Really? That's supposed to make us feel safe? Make us feel better? And can you please define regularly? Is that every day? Is that once a week? Or is that when the human waste exceeds so many piles or so many pounds? And is it just me? I see a health hazard here. Am I just being paranoid? Mitch, Michelle, Randy, you can now use that path because the county is going to come out and make sure you got a clear path through the waste. I don't get it. It also responded here in our petition, we're talking about the noise. What qualifies the responders in this response? What qualifies them to claim that the noise is not sufficient enough to cause the elderly fear, depression, and anxiety? And therefore, it doesn't meet the standards for elderly abuse. How do you come to that conclusion? How about, have you spent a week from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM? Well, in a moment, you're going to get to hear some of this noise that we encountered because it's been recorded. And last, the response claims federal court cases prevent you from moving this encampment. Would you care to tell me in this opinion where it so states that? I can't find it. And the county has moved other encampments, so don't give me that excuse. Look, this is not a homeless issue. This is a criminal issue and that's what we referenced in the petition. There's a clear and present danger. When the fire department is called to this encampment, their response is, oh, the homeless are allowed to have fire to keep warm. Since when do you need a bonfire to keep warm when it's 100 degrees outside? What are you waiting for? Are you waiting for one of, ember from one of those cooking fires to blow over and set one of the mobile homes ablaze? And then maybe one of our elderly disabled that can't get out dies? Then your thoughts and prayers are going to go out? And maybe you'll say, oh, we should have done something. BS. I'm going to yield and I'm going to allow a number of the affected individuals with personal stories to address this board. But let me state this in the strongest possible voice. If these elderly were your parents, was your mother, was your grandmother, you wouldn't have stand for this for one minute. You'd have solved this problem a long time ago. Well, these seniors and these elderly citizens deserve and demand the criminal element be permanently removed from the Citrus Road area. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Oh, one more thing. One more thing.
Go ahead.
The response also states that, and it says to me, your efforts will likely not result in the immediate clearing of this encampment. Why not? Was your mind made up before I even got up here?
Okay.
I'll yield to my colleagues here.
Okay. Thanks, John. Okay, then I have next, I guess Barbara, you're next in order and then followed by Randy and then I guess Michelle, you get to be the closer, so.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm a little emotional from that. I have some videos. First, but first, I want to thank the Rancho Cordova Police Department, Sergeant Garcia, Deputy Caramello, the hot team, which is Deputy Voe, who is tireless in helping us. Code enforcement to help with the cleanup. Voe, who is tireless in helping us. Code enforcement to help with the cleanup. And I stand out there with the cleanup. It is, I don't want to say anymore on that. Um, I have videos, uh, audios.
Audios.
Now, this is something that you hear all night long.
It's okay.
No, I'm just trying to find it. Okay. This is music that is heard. This is seven o'clock in the morning. This happens all night long. Now, this next one, I apologize for my language in this, but you'll get the point of this. This is a meltdown. He went on for an hour and a half, and he does it almost every day. Stole his shit. Somebody, somebody stole his shit. Somebody stole his, he thought somebody stole his stuff. Don't point. That'll just give you the idea.
The flavor of it, yes.
Um, how much more time do I have?
Well, I, I gave, just didn't know, Barbara, I gave 15 minutes for the, all four of you together. Um, and I've, I've stopped it right now because you asked a question, but, you know, we'll, we'll try to accommodate your comments. So, yeah.
I appreciate you hearing me, but this is something that, this is your job to do. Help us. We're, we're here for help. We don't know where to go. I feel bad for these people, but I also feel bad for my residents. They're disabled. We have a man that is, he's dying of cancer, and he has to listen to that. It's right outside his backyard. There's another woman that just moved in. She can't enjoy. And they build, they clean up, and then they bring big old tarps and garbage, and I've watched the garbage come out. Please help us. I know this is a tough situation, but we need you.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Okay, Randy?
Yes, sir.
Question.
Good afternoon.
Thank, uh, excuse me, I'm gonna, just to follow up, and I'll have some more comments at the end. Um, I, this is inexcusable, what's, what's, what's going on and what you, you what you are putting up with. My office is directly engaged in this. Um, Mr. Cullum from my office went out there to the site, reported back to me. There's, as you know, it's, it straddles both city and county, this area, and trying to get all of the stakeholders, whether it's county, or sheriff, or code, involved and come up with the best approach, unfortunately does take time. I know that, that doesn't offer you any, any satisfaction. But we are, I am fully engaged in, in resolving this. No one should have to live with this right next to their home, um, and the disruption that, that it causes you. And, and Mark from my office actually was treated very aggressively himself by some of the campers when he went out there to, to look at the site. Um, I had a question for you. When the Sheriff's Department, which as you know, Rancho Cordova Police Department is the Sheriff's Department, um, did they mention to you why, I mean, because we do have that Boise versus Martin case, which, which is an impediment, and we could get into a legal discussion about that with our county council and, and others who interpret that. But that does not, you're right, that does not prevent us from enforcing the law. So I'm curious, does the Sheriff's Department comment on if they are seeing violations of the law, independent from just camping where it's prohibited? Are they taking enforcement action?
Want me to answer that?
Or whomever.
Whoever.
I'm just curious what they're, what they're telling you. Just so, that'll, that'll help inform me in some of my efforts.
When they, when we, when I spoke to them, and when they met with us, they simply state they're, they're, they don't have the resources to enforce this, and when they do enforce it, they write citations. These people just tear it up, throw it in that canal. They don't, they ignore it. You know, if I get a citation, you're gonna come and get me. But these, these people are immune. This is crazy.
Okay. No, I appreciate, and that is, that is part of, uh,
Barbara, you can come.
Recurring situations we face. And, and, you know, you are, you are not alone.
They know, they know how long it takes for the police to get there. They, they have lookers, watchers.
I understand.
And they know exactly.
Is the community prosecutor involved as well in this situation? Because I'm going to bring in the one from the north area, Ron Lintecum. I don't know, I know the city of Rancho Cordova has their own, I believe, who works with the DA's office. Okay, I, if you don't know, I'll find out. Okay, well, I'll let you continue and then may have some, uh, I'll probably, um, ask a couple of questions of Emily at the end. Thank you.
All right.
All right, Randy. Um, my home butts up against Citrus Road. I'm like right behind, they're right behind me. It's become a major campground. Um, with it comes the piles of trash, traffic coming and going of all hours of the day, the dealing of drugs, which I have seen, loud music playing at all hours, the fighting, the dog barking, the running loose of them chasing people down the bike trail, the animals, um, the building of unpermitted structures and hammering at all hours of the morning to open fires under the trees and in the dry area, to hopping over our wall, and I've seen them hop over it and stealing from us. Um, uh, I'd like to know what homeless person can afford a $2,000, um, electric bike. I've seen one out there in the back with them riding it. Um, at one time, I used to access the bike trail. I'm an avid, I was an avid bike rider. Um, uh, but I don't ride it anymore because of my health conditions. Um, I have multiple sclerosis, and over the last two years, I have now encountered seizures because I don't get the rest and the sleep that I need to get. Currently, I'm on two hours of sleep. Last night, all I could hear was the dog barking behind me. I called the police several times and reported it. Um, it's real hard for me to get the rest that I need. Um, I'm lucky if I get at least four hours of sleep every night because of the noise behind me. Um, and there are signs that I, you know that there's signs are posted back there. But we have laws that we have to follow, and to me, it's just not fair. I mean, they get away with whatever they want. Um, and I have seen them, there was one gentleman that had a gun in the back, and I did call the police on it. Um, to come to find out, it was an air gun, and he says, yes, they are allowed to carry that. And I said, you know, to me, that's not fair. It should be a registered, I think it should be a registered gun, but he was back there waving it and pointing at, you know, whatever he could point it at. So I did call the police, they came out and checked it. But, um, I just want to see them move to another location, which I understand you have to do, they have to have another location to go to. And there are places out there. There is a place on highway, on Folsom Boulevard, it used to be the mineshaft, which I think something is possible they could look at as a Board of Supervisors to move them there. It's a nice, open area. So, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, Michelle.
Hello, my name's Michelle. And I use that, um, Back Gate Citrus Road three times a week. I'm on a motor scooter that goes to go to the bank, to get my medication, my groceries, and I have to travel through the riffraff. I've had people come up, ask me for money. Are you homeless? Yeah. And this, you know, can we help you? That's the homeless asking me. And it used to be enjoyable going back. There's, uh, these two ladies in their 90s will not go back there at all. They're too scared. Because they're tiny ladies. I know I'm a little bit larger. But either I have to travel through Sunrise and Zimfordale, crossing the traffic, which almost got ran over a few times, or go behind the, the country club motorhome. But I just need, we need some help here. It's, it's getting scarier. We have to like, I counted 25 tents the other day. There's about between 40 to 45 people there. And they're always yelling, get fight. I've seen guys beat on their girlfriends, other people. It's just amazing. It's back there. And the smell is so bad. Certain areas you go down the road, smell, keep going. And I just stay on the road until I get to the Gold River side. Now, the Gold River side doesn't have this because they took all the Gold River people, homeless, and put it on our side. Because all those apartments that they're gonna rent out from $2,000 to $3,000 a month. Because they were over there about a year and a half ago. Somebody put them over here and over our side. So I just want to say we need help.
Thanks, Michelle. Can I just ask staff a question? I, I'm very familiar with the area. I've represented this area over the years, certainly Mobile Country Estates when I was first elected and then, uh, up until 2010. And we've had some issues over time, certainly not to the degree that you're describing here. Um, who is responsible for the trail? Is the trail actually City of Rancho Cordova's responsibility, the physical trail itself? Because you do have this, and then you've got the canal there that runs behind, you've got the industrial businesses on Amalgam Way.
It is not a regional.
Or it's DOT, right?
It is not part of regional parks, I'm hearing.
No, I know. But it's sort of Department of Transportation, because you've got that Citrus Road connection now into Folsom Boulevard that takes all the way up to obviously Coloma Road and beyond.
Yes. Liz Bell is Director of Regional Parks. It is not a regional parks trail. Um, I believe we've referred things on to either private land or, or Department of Transportation. I'll go check with staff to confirm, or if it's City of Rancho Cordoba. I'll let you jump in.
Hi, good afternoon. Ron Vicari, Director of Transportation. Um, there, so it is, in there, there's shared between County of Sacramento and City of Rancho Cordoba.
Ron, just tell everybody who you are, because we, Liz, identify yourself.
I'm sorry. They're, Ron Vicari, Director of Transportation for Sacramento County.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
Um, so it's shared between Sacramento County and Rancho Cordoba. I can, uh, look and see exactly where they, they, the tents are and, and define whether it's actually
Physical Trail is the County of Sacramento? Because you've got the area between the Mobile Country Estates, and then you've got the trail, and then you've got the area behind that up to the fences that about the industrial area there. So is the trail, who's, who, physical trail, is that our facility, or is that a shared? Does the line go down the middle? Or?
So it is shared. It's probably been seven or eight years since I actually looked at the right of way lines. So I would, I know that it's shared. I do not know exactly where the right of way lines fall. So I could definitely get back to you. And I could identify, uh, where the encampments are, and I can identify where, in, in relation to the right of way lines. So I can identify exactly what jurisdiction it falls under for you. But I'd have to follow up with that.
Okay. And the reason I, I ask, and I know Supervisor Desmond certainly has been, you know, very key in this, he and his office, and we've got others that want to weigh in. I just, I wanted to ask the question because, again, as I recall, there's just the asphalt pavement, and we've done some weed abatement, but there's no lighting, it has direct connection to Folsom Boulevard, obviously Coloma Road, and you can take the trail component all the way up to the, up to the river nearly. Um, but if it, if it's within the DOT system, so it's an off-street trail, and some of the, uh, things that we've taken on relative to consideration as relates to obstruction, not only for trail users, but obviously areas that are adjacent to our rights of way. So I assume we have a right of way going through there. Actually, it was the Citrus Road right of way. That road was, um, used before we put the ballers down on the other end. It wasn't used necessarily legally, but people would come in with their vehicles, and maybe some of the folks who lived in the park that long to know that. But we've, you know, you've basically blocked off the ability for cars to generally get in there unless they were to, you know, wedge their way in from the south. I guess I'm curious, Ron, so how have we approached this from DOT? Have you, has your department been involved in this?
Uh, yeah. So we have, we have, there's been some cleanup efforts there. I will tell you that, um, probably this, the, you know, hearing this today, being here, actually for another item, and Emily also being here, uh, we, we will, we'll, we'll look, but by next Wednesday, we'll be able to identify exactly what I said, what locations it's in. And we will take it up as part of our encampment services team. Uh, so we will definitely look at what we, what can be done, uh, recognizing that, that certainly there's, uh, far greater activity than we anticipated. So, uh, we'll make sure that we get on that, uh, and, and make sure that we have pitchers and the right of way established so that we can discuss it and really talk, and we're, um, county council is also part of the discussion. So we can really look at what can be done.
And you have a drainage channel that's the water resources responsibility that runs, that drains some of those properties, an open channel. It's not humongous, but it's fairly deep. And I know folks have, you, I can't put the camp up against using the water as a divider and then being innovative in the ways they get across, but actually up against those fences that about the industrial properties. So, um, you know, it's multi-jurisdictional. I mean, Mr. Honeypole said that, we know that, and, uh, I'm gonna go, let Rich take over here. But it seems to me that there needs to be a multi-disciplinary response and that this doesn't work. It doesn't get the job done. And we maybe have some limitations, but this doesn't work. And I'm not saying you are doing that, but I think that's what the residents, if I can summarize what I've heard beyond the incidents here, is that there's a lot of this, and the situation continues to be, uh, one is causing not just discomfort, but grief and maybe some health issues. I mean, that was the petition that Mr. Honeypole submitted on behalf, was that this was, quote, elder abuse in, end of quote, in their view. And I understand why they portrayed it that way. But, okay. Rachel, I'm gonna go to, go to, Ron's there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, um, yeah, yes, the fact that it's right there on the border of different jurisdictions, including, you know, different departments, us trying to figure out in the county, um, makes it more difficult. But I can tell you, I, you have my absolute commitment to continue to, to work with my counterparts in the City of Rancho Cordoba and, and make sure we get the right people involved. There are talks and plans right now to be doing more, and I don't know if the county exec actually had some comments on it.
I actually do. I just wanted to share that I actually had a conversation about this very encampment with the city manager in Rancho Cordoba this morning, and we agreed to, uh, work together very quickly to try and make something happen.
Thank you. And, and my office will be following up on that, obviously. And I think we need to do a better job, obviously, communicating with you. So I don't know who emailed my office directly, but whoever is kind of the, okay, John?
Mr. Honeypole is.
Let's, let's schedule a meeting with you directly, and I will try to get a couple of the, the leaders in the city and the county who are directly involved and, and, and let you know exactly what we're doing, what some of the limitations are, and how we can get around those limitations. Because, you know, it's, you weave together a lot of threads here. One is, is you even alluded to it. I mean, this isn't, this isn't indicative of, of everybody who's homeless, but not all homeless encampments and homeless individuals are the same. Some are not as, don't care as much about being disruptive in, in neighborhood communities. And Dan talks about that, and, and is it John, I think, behind you, Dan? You talk about that a lot. Um, and, but you also brought up the, the dynamic we face sometimes where one camp gets moved for whatever reason, and then it, it pops up somewhere else and becomes much larger. And that's why this becomes part of our discussion about finding more alternatives, which is not only the right thing to do, but it gives us more ability to move camps that are causing problems. And so I, I will have a, a follow-up meeting with you, John, and with the, the main players, while at the same time, plans are proceeding right now to do more to address this problem in the, in the immediate term.
Okay. All right, Mr. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I, um, support certainly Supervisor Desmond, uh, in his, um, you know, in his effort to get this addressed swiftly. And, um, I'm hopeful that with the cooperation of the county executive, that it's, um, gonna be taken care of one way or another. I just wanted to take the opportunity, maybe to vent myself a bit, because I stood where the four of you did just less than 24 hours ago with photographs in my own neighborhood, um, where we had a, uh, fire that probably garnered the attention of no less than 30 to 40 firefighters last week. Um, it was a wildland fire out by the airport. Um, and it was sparked by a homeless encampment, uh, where we have tents and trailers and RVs, bicycle chop shops going on, um, human waste. Um, I would say probably at least, um, every other, if not almost every board meeting, we have constituents that's constituents that speak like you do to the same issue, different parts of the county. It becomes more frequent, unfortunately, seems to me, more frequent every meeting. I want to express the exact same sentiments that you did about the Boise case. I think it is BS. And I don't care anymore whether I get criticized for criminalizing homelessness. As Rich Desmond just mentioned, it's not a monolithic population. And they're just like our, our regular population, the housed population. You have folks that are law-abiding, you have folks that aren't. But I'm at a point with my frustration that I just want to go on record saying, I think it's about time we test it. I think we should test the case. And I know our county council and, you know, her staff, Phil Strongly, that, you know, and they're doing their fiduciary duty to advise the, the board not to put the county in legal jeopardy. But it's become out of control, completely out of control. And, you know, I have some of the worst cases of it in the district I represent, because I represent the lower reach of the American River Parkway. There is, I challenge anyone to tell me there's a larger concentration of folks that, again, not all of them are bad apples, but there are many, that are living between the 8th Street Bridge and the confluence on the American River Parkway. Some have estimated it to be 3,500 people, believe it or not. And like the gentleman who used to cycle mentioned, he would love to use the Parkway. I would love to use the Parkway. I grew up, I'm a native Sacramento. I grew up using the Parkway as a kid. You know, if I had children, there's no way I'd let them go use the Parkway, anywhere near the Parkway right now. So I'm at, I'm at a tipping point in my, in my thought process about Boise. I know others, other local electeds here in the region embrace it for whatever reason they provide. I don't. I don't think it is, it has translated into good public policy, nor do I think it's translated into fair service delivery for the people that we serve. And we serve everyone, whether you're unhoused or not. In fact, Boise, I would say, I would say Boise actually, in some respects, hurts those that are, that are homeless, because it gives them kind of the latitude and the comfort level to just, you know, do what, what you've cited, citing the court case so no one can try and get them into a better situation, somewhere that's more appropriate. I'm going to continue to, if I have to, to go to that side of the dais with photographs. And now you've given me a new idea about audio. But I'll tell you, this supervisor has had it. I've had it with this, with the Boise case. And I'll take all the, you know, all the criticism from the Sacramento Bee or the homeless advocates all day long. I'll take it all day long. But, but when, you know, we keep on hearing what we just heard for the last half an hour, you know, and we have nothing to offer except this, our own venting of our own frustration, it gets us nowhere. And, you know, I'm just beside myself with it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Supervisor Frost.
Well, I just want to say that I agree with Supervisor Serna, that we've gotten to a point where the homeless situation is affecting our quality of life. And when you have a situation where someone who's living on the streets can actually impact the safety of, you know, the safety of the neighborhood, people can't walk on the sidewalk because they've blocked it, and so they're walking out on the busy street around them, when we can't send our kids to our parks and so forth, and it's not safe to go there ourselves, it's a problem. But I did want to say that there's a whole lot of really good, we're, we are, we have been trying. We're working on, you know, we've extended our, our hotel, what do we call our hotel?
Project Room Key.
Project Room Key. We've extended it a little bit. We're, we're expanding with some, you know, safe stay accommodations where we have a place where we can send people so we can actually comply with the Ninth Circuit Court decision. And we are investing way more. So it's just, we just can't seem to do it fast enough. And there, there were some disruptions because of COVID, but I think you can see we have all, we are all committed to putting every resource we have and can into figuring out how we can make this situation better. And so I know Supervisor Desmond's, your situation isn't the only one, but you have my support. I think it's pretty obvious the entire board supports, we'll do everything we can to help out. And it looks like our county council's already on it, so.
All right, Lisa.
I'm excited about that.
I was just going to remind everyone that this is an off-agenda item, and it's been now going on for quite some time. So I believe we have direction to staff from Supervisor Desmond, and staff has committed to looking into it. I just wanted to point that out.
All right. And that's sage advice. When we have an off-agenda item, we knew you were going to come here to present, but it was not scheduled for any action. We're somewhat limited. We're supposed to just listen. You've heard some interaction here, so that's what she was referring to. But I would just, I guess, maybe sum it up. I don't have any other member of the board in the queue. We certainly have heard you. We appreciate the time you've taken here this afternoon, the, obviously the frustration, I think, some of the concern, deep-seated concern. And we're going to do our best to see this translated into action. I think the fact that the county executive spoke with the city manager recently this morning, you have a shared command with the sheriff's department, you have, I think, certainly a supervisor represents the area. I represent the area immediately to the west, very familiar with your neighborhood and certainly where you reside. So, well, again, we've heard, I just noticed Supervisor Serna said, nearly every meeting now, we hear from a different part of our constituency geographically throughout this county. And I think certainly people's impatience with what they see as being in action, certainly tolerance for the human condition, a lot of concern for that. And we know we're putting a lot of money in that regard and the effort to try to assist folks. But I guess you certainly have our commitment today that we're going to follow through. John, you'll be the point of contact, and certainly others, if you want to be contacted, we can, we have got your phone numbers here in your signup sheets. But we can't take any formal action today. I think you've heard the conversation, and I appreciate you being here. And we'll do our best to see if we can correct the situation in a very short amount of time. So that's all we can, that's all we can do today, John. There's no other action come out of this today, so. All right. Very good. Thank you all. You're welcome to stay. And Supervisor Desmond may come down and exchange a card with you as well. Okay. With that, I did have one other speaker off agenda in the, in chambers, Mr. Adelholt. Dan? Well, they can stay. They're welcome to stay. Yeah, you're not directing, they're, they're, they're welcome. That's right, Dan. They're welcome to stay and listen to what you have to say. Sure.
The county board's hands are tied. I talked to the lady yesterday in that situation over there, and I got my Metro Homes crews motivated. We're all going to go out there and help these people, the trailer park over there, they stay at Rancho Cordova. I got the lady's card. She was here yesterday. Talking about the same situation.
It was a different, different area.
Huh?
Different area.
She said Rancho Cordova by Colfax.
By Coloma?
By Colfax.
Oh, no, something she said over there.
Coloma, yeah. Okay.
I think it's by Ansel Hoffmann, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think it's by Ansel Hoffmann. Yeah, the lady was here yesterday, it was by Ansel Hoffmann, Dan. At least the gentleman, the husband and wife that spoke, so.
It's Rancho Cordova.
So there's two areas now being victimized out here in Rancho Cordova?
Well, I think the other area was actually in the Carmichael area. I could be wrong. Go ahead, Dan.
See, this is what I was talking about a couple of meetings ago, you guys. When I said Rancho Cordova is getting really bad with the situation, because the circuit judge, Boise versus Martin, hearing is to protect the innocent people out there that are homeless, not the criminals. We do not condone criminalize criminals, period, and we do not condone hoarders. And what I'm hearing right now, and what I'm seeing, really frustrated the hell out of me, I'll be honest with you, because these people have the right to live in peace in their own community, and that's just ridiculous what's going on out there. I do, I would like to find out where this place is, because I'm going to go out there and check it out myself with my Metro Homes crews and get cleaned out out there and see about getting people on board, keeping it clean, and be more respectful. Because it's all about respecting your community, helping each other, not sitting there and thinking you can do whatever the hell you want, kind of thing, and it's, and ruin it for everybody else. There's always a few bad apples ruined for too many. And we're tired of this. Serna, I heard you loud and clear, buddy. I'm with you on this one. Rich Desmond, I heard him loud and clear, I'm with him. Sue Frost, all you guys, we're fed up with the criminalized part of it. We're fed up with the hoarder part of it. Okay? There's a lot of homeless people out here that are not hoarders. They're not, they're trying to do the best way they can. But then you do, like, walk away if you got the bad. And right now, me and my Metro Homes crews, I mean, we're not the law, but we definitely do not have to go by the rules that you guys have to go by. We're going out there, and we're going to be cleaning up that place. And we're going to see about getting people on board to get it, kind of, help keep it clean, give them trash bags, see if they'll do that. If not, you know, we're just going to see about doing what all we can to keep everything clean and safe. Because I just got through hearing that it's something about feces out there and all that stuff, and that's really disgusting. And nobody should be living like that. Nobody should be living in fear of the way they're living. What I just got through hearing makes me sick. No American should be feeling that way. And I want to go out there, and I would like to know this location so we could go, and I am definitely going to get that area cleaned up. That I can promise you with my crews. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. I don't have any other off agendas, signups here. I have some folks that want to speak to item number four, so we'll get to that in a moment. Do we have any callers on the phone off agenda?
We do not have any callers.
Okay. All right. Then that concludes our off-agenda comments for this afternoon session. We will come back to our posted agenda then and call our first item if you could, Madam Clerk.
Item number two, Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for the Arden Arcade and Carmichael Sidewalk and Streetlights Improvement Project for Weeby Company located at Zero El Camino Avenue, Martin Lopez, who acquired title as Martin Lopez, AKA Martin Lopez Navarro, a married man, and his sole and separate property located at 3410 Edison Avenue. Alexander Shifchenko, an unmarried man, and Ivan I. Shifchenko, an unmarried man, as joint tenants located at 3470 Edison Avenue. And F.R.A.Y.L.L.C., a California Limited Liability Company located at 4850 Marconi Avenue. G.B. Properties Incorporated, a California incorporation, located at 3449 Edison Avenue. And Cia Lea, I don't know if I'm saying that right, L.L.C., a California Limited Liability Company located at 5409 El Camino Avenue. The environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Okay. Thank you for reading that to record.
Hello. Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and members of the board. I'm Peter Hannan, Program Manager, Acquisition Section with the Real Estate Division. And I'm here today to introduce this item, which recommends board approval for six resolutions of necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property interests for the Department of Transportation's Arden Arcade and Carmichael Sidewalk and Streetlights Improvement Project. The project proposes to install bike lanes, new sidewalks, and streetlights at various locations in the county of Sacramento along Edison Avenue, El Camino Avenue, Hurley Way, Manzanita Avenue, and Marconi Avenue. Of the 38 necessary acquisitions for this project, six properties are the subject of this board item. Number one, the Weeby Company located at Zero El Camino Avenue. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across the affected property. Number two, Martin Lopez, who acquired title as Martin Lopez, AKA Martin Lopez Navarro, as a married man and his sole and separate property located at 3410 Edison Avenue. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of this affected property. Number three, Alexander Shivenko, an unmarried man, and Ivan I. Shivenko, an unmarried man, as joint tenants located at 37, 3470 Edison Avenue. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the affected property. Number four, F.R.A.Y.L.L.C., a California Limited Liability Company located at 4850 Marconi Avenue. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across the affected property. Item number five, G.B. Properties, Inc., a California corporation located at 3449 Edison Avenue. Real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the affected property. Lastly, Salia, L.L.C., a California Limited Liability Company located at 5409 El Camino Avenue. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire are an easement for public roadway and public utilities, and an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and lastly, a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the affected property. The county obtained appraisals for the affected properties from an independent appraiser and presented offers to the respective property owners. I just mentioned, the county's negotiations with these remaining owners have reached impasse. The county is thus unable to proceed to secure the necessary easement interests in the subject properties under the current circumstances. Today's resolutions of necessity and anticipated eminent domain actions will provide for possession of the necessary required real property rights and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. Information to support the regulatory, or the statutory resolution of necessity findings is contained within the staff report included with the agenda packet, along with a history of owner contacts. Notices of intention to seek approval of the resolutions of necessity were mailed to the respective property owners by registered mail and standard mail at least 15 days before today's proceedings. If you have any questions regarding the project or any of the properties in question, I or other project team members present are available to address those questions for you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Do we have any questions, Peter? All right. I don't see any questions. I don't have anybody signed up to speak, so notices were sent to property owners of today's resolutions discussion on the resolution necessity. Do we have anyone on the phone?
We do not have any callers.
Okay. Mr. Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Peter. Very supportive of this project, which we could do a lot more of it, of course, but to create more, safer options for bicycles and pedestrians in these, these areas that have been, you know, these unincorporated communities that have been neglected or have not kept pace with the growth in these areas. So certainly supportive and certainly hope that we will be able to reach an agreement with these property owners so we do not have to take action through eminent domain. But I'm certainly supportive of the, moving forward, the resolutions of necessity today and move approval.
Second.
If you take those in a block, county council?
No, they have to be separate.
Separate, okay. Okay. All right. Go ahead, close, start calling them.
So this will be for the first property? So that was Supervisor Desmond, and I'm sorry, who did the second?
Supervisor Serna.
Serna, okay. Unanimous vote. Okay, so property two.
Move approval.
Second.
Please vote. Unanimous vote. Number three.
So moved.
Second.
Unanimous vote. Number four.
So moved.
Second.
Unanimous vote. Property five.
So moved.
Second.
You guys are making this easy. Unanimous vote. And your final property, number six.
So moved.
Second.
Unanimous vote.
Six for six.
Thank you, Chair Natoli and members of the board. Have a good afternoon. Thank you.
For those aid to our transportation staff for their work. Okay.
Item number three is Senate Bill Number Two, Housing Production Streamlining and Acceleration Amendments to the Sacramento County Zoning Code and Countywide Design Guidelines. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Can you lower the podium, please, Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Harmon.
When's it gonna stop? There we go. All right. Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. The amendment package before you was a significant undertaking not only by county planning staff, but we coordinated with several other sections, including other divisions within Community Development Agency. The amendment package before you today includes amendments to just about every chapter of the county zoning code except for Chapter Four, and addresses development standards, allowed uses, and the processing of permits related to housing developments. The project also includes a repeal and replacement of Chapter Three of the countywide design guidelines related to multifamily developments, and some minor administrative amendments to the county zoning code user guide, as well as various applications and internal procedure processes. In 2019, the Sacramento County received grant funding from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, known as the SB2 Grant. This funding covers several projects, one of which is the Development Code Update Package that's before you today. Another one that staff is also working on is the countywide rezone program using the same funding source. The goal of this funding was to encourage development of policies and regulations that streamline the production of all different types of housing products. In the spring of 2021, planning staff brought a summary of the proposed key amendments to all 14 of the CPACs to receive initial feedback on the level of amendments that we were proposing. And then in the fall of 2021, we held a workshop with the Planning Commission to go over the specific proposed code language where we received additional comments and proposed revisions from the Planning Commission. And then on April 14, 2022, the Planning Commission held their official hearing on the package and recommended approval of the package to your board. The next several slides, I will go over each of the chapters in the zoning code and a summary of the major amendments within each of those chapters. For Chapter Two, the amendments are relatively minor.
Excuse me, Wendy. Just one second. So your last slide as to the various hearing bodies that you went to, and I know it was a year ago that you went to the CPACs, and in the staff report that was prepared previously and here before us today, it talks about the Planning Commission was supportive of a revised, less extensive set of changes. I know each of us probably had a briefing, but as you go through these next chapters, if there's some important distinctions that from what went out early to the CPACs and some of them found objectionable or of concern, changes that were made, if you could kind of make a footnote, either as a part of your presentation or as you come back to this. So what the CPACs saw versus what the Commission then considered, and then obviously what comes before us today, because I know you've taken account even some of our discussion from at least the continuance a few weeks ago. So again, I don't want to interrupt your presentation, but it's important because that CPAC portion, I'll just say for this member of the board, was, is and remains a critical piece of this because they will in all likelihood, or maybe not, they'll see this and they won't see any of the changes come back unless there gets a project that comes out of the ground that they're concerned about. So if you could kind of note that, and it's not relevant to all the sections you're going to go through, but I would just, I want to ask that you maybe target that either as you go through or as you come back to your comments, if you could. Okay?
Certainly. So let me start off by saying that when we went to the CPACs in spring of 2021, we did not have draft language of the actual ordinance for them to review. We had topical items for them to review, so they were not actually reviewing the draft language. We did invite all of the CPACs to the Planning Commission workshop where we did have draft language. So it'll be very easy for me to distinguish some of the changes that were made based on both general CPAC comments as well as Planning Commission comments at the workshop versus the package that went to the Commission on April 14, 2022.
Okay. Thanks, Wendy.
No problem. Let's see. So Chapter 22, or Chapter 22, Chapter Two was really minor modifications where we really just went through and made sure it was really clear which zone districts we identify as single-family zone districts and which zone districts we identify as high-density or multifamily. So RD1 through RD10 are our single-family zone districts, and then RD15 and higher are our multifamily or high-density zone districts. And then, of course, there's our agricultural and agricultural residential zone districts. In Chapter Three, that is where our use table of permitted and conditionally permitted uses is located. And amendments to this chapter included allowing for more product types primarily in our lower-density zone districts. So allowing duplexes and halfplexes in our RD3 to RD10 zones, as well as some provisions for multifamily projects in our RD5 and RD7 zone district. I would point out.
You have a question, Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Wendy. You and I had a discussion the other day, and Todd as well, and I appreciate you spending some time talking to me about this. We had a discussion specifically about just the definitions of multifamily housing versus a duplex. And I bring it up because you're illustrating it here. I mean intuitively, for me, a duplex is certainly is multifamily housing, but for purposes of the county code, they're not considered one and the same. Can you explain that a little bit, how the code treats them?
Certainly. So per our zoning code, the definition of multifamily is three or more units on a single parcel. And those units can be attached or detached, but you need the three units. A duplex for us is usually one building with two single-family units, you know, they're completely separate units, but it's one building on one parcel. A halfplex is similar to a duplex, except that there's an invisible property line going through the home separating the two units, and they can be sold separately from each other.
Okay. Thank you. I think that explanation is important as we get into this discussion further and just making sure we keep that distinction in mind. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, no problem. So currently in our zoning code, we do allow multifamily projects within our RD10 zone with approval of a use permit from the zoning administrator. The package before you today would allow for multifamily projects of 10 or fewer units by right within the RD5, the RD7, and the RD10 zone district. And projects larger than 10 units would require the use permit to the zoning administrator.
Can I just be clear on that? That's not state law that says it has to be that way. That's what you're proposing as a staff.
Correct. That was not required by state law. It was us looking for ways to increase ability for more multifamily projects. We're trying to be sensitive to surrounding neighborhoods, and that's why we wanted to have a break between a smaller-sized project and a larger project. That was an area where I believe both the CPACs had some concern about. The Planning Commission initially did. Their bigger concern was more on the setback issues, which I'll get to in a later slide.
But if we chose to go down that road, viewing your recommendation, it's your recommendation that it be done by right. We currently don't permit those, at least some of what you described at all, without a rezoning. And so I guess the question I would pose in party-party conversation as we follow up here is that we could allow for that under discretionary review so that it would, given that that were a product type that folks wanted to introduce into a single-family zone lot, irrespective of what might be in the development code and/or the design guidelines, that we could allow for that but not go as far as to say it's by right. We could say that that's a use permit to a hearing body, Planning Commission, for example, which would then allow an appeal to the board, because this is going to be very new in some neighborhoods. And I just, again, if we're trying to accommodate some of the shortage in housing, but also look for different product types that could be introduced and may have worked well historically in some neighborhoods, this is a big departure for a lot of the suburban neighborhoods, whether they be long existing or even some of the newer ones. And I just think that I wanted to point that out because we could retain the authorities to actually have discretionary review, separate apart from setbacks or anything else, for those types of product types and densities, even on the small projects. Is that accurate, Wendy? You're recommending not so, but we could, because state law hasn't dug this deep into our county zoning code yet, so.
That is correct. And perhaps when I get done with the presentation, if there are areas of the proposal that your board has some concerns about and would like to look at modifying, then staff is happy to go into more detail on those and kind of some options available for you that would allow you to take action today versus items that may require referral back to the Commission.
That's good.
I'd piggyback a little. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a great point because I think that, you know, with respect to the duplex, halfplex, that's not the concern. But right now, if it's five or seven, they can't do multifamily housing. They can at 10 with a use permit. So you kind of went from nothing, or from not being allowed at all, to by right. I mean, I agree with Chair Natoli about the importance of preserving some discretion. Maybe we make it more available, but there still has to be some review, certainly. And that would be a big concern of mine because this is a dramatic change. And I know, you know, I'm curious, did you have this discussion with the CPACs or the Planning Commission about how we could either make it by right or provide some discretion with a use permit at RD5 and RD7? Did you have that discussion with them? Just kind of some different options? I'm just curious.
I don't recall specifically having that discussion. I know that some of the CPACs were not as concerned about the small multifamily projects. Some CPACs were more sensitive to that. There was one commissioner, I believe at the workshop, that brought that up. They unfortunately were not at the April 14 hearing, so I'm not sure if, you know, where they would have ultimately landed.
And I too, join with Supervisor Serna. I mean, yes, we desperately need to attract more housing, but we also, I think, need to be extremely sensitive to the big change this represents and be able to preserve that level of discretion.
All right. I had some talking points that kind of talked about the fact that these changes would not increase density. There was an example presented in the staff report. I can go through that, or I can kind of keep moving forward if you guys have a good understanding that these changes will not impact the allowable density or number of units per acre.
I'm just curious on that, though. So on the RD5, if you allow for 10 units, so how do you not change the density? RD5 allow one?
That's actually a very good question, Supervisor Natoli. So 10 units is the maximum, but if you were one acre in RD5, then technically your maximum would be five units. But if you were two acres in RD5, you could get up to that 10. Or if you were RD10 with one acre, you could get to that 10. So 10 is the maximum, but we still aren't allowing you to go over your base zoning density.
So how does that benefit if you don't get any increased density and you're due to according a lot size allotment? So I come in, I want to do a small multifamily project of eight units on two acres, when I could put 10 houses, single-family houses with appropriate setbacks on the same amount of property. How is it, do you gain anything in the housing unit shortage realm and maybe allows for some variation in design? But what does it achieve in the overall?
So in that first aspect, what it's achieving is flexibility in the housing type and providing more variety in the different types of housing product that the county has. Typically in our county, you know, it's either traditional, single-family. We may have some smaller lots, single-family in some of the newer growth areas. We don't see too much duplex or halfplex development. We're starting to see a little bit more of it nowadays, or your more traditional multifamily. So it would just allow more variety and flexibility for developers to decide what type of residential structure type they want to develop without really changing the density of that zone district.
So one of the thoughts, although I think it may have been affected by marketplace forces, is that, you know, in single-family settings, that, you know, homeownership is a high propensity of the number of owner-occupied units, and that, so you're saying within a single-family zone, you could do, at least under staff recommendation, up to not compromising the density, but basically you could have, it would become a rental property, unless it was a halfplex. Now, halfplexes require certain construction, and I think condominiums may not require, again, owner occupancy, either our homeowners associations. Are you building into that, then, that somehow you would have a better handle on property maintenance because you would require some additional upkeep, HOAs, or not?
So it would also allow for condominium-type projects or attached row houses and things of that nature, which could be sold because you're buying airspace. And then there were some provisions in the zoning code for projects that were 10 or more units to have HOAs to address some of those concerns with maintenance and whatnot. So yes, we did take that into consideration.
For 10 or more, for the smaller projects, not so. Yeah, okay. All right.
All right. So I think I pretty much covered everything that's on this slide with the discussion that we just had. So Chapter Five, this is where we address some pretty significant changes. The first part is really about reorganization of our landscape standards for development projects. We found there was a lot of repetition throughout different sections of landscaping, not only within the zoning code, but within the design guidelines. So we took a look at making them easier to understand and for staff to implement. And then the majority of the changes are really with regard to our multifamily development standards. We're proposing to reduce front yard setbacks for multifamily projects down from 25 feet to 20 feet. It'll be slightly larger if there's a public utility, public facility easement on that property. And then reduction in setbacks from multifamily to low-density residential projects is also proposed. Our current development standards require a setback of anywhere between 25 to 75 feet, depending on the number of stories of that multifamily project. And we have heard from various developers as part of our housing element update and other stakeholder meetings, that this makes it very difficult for those multifamily projects to be able to be developed at their designated density without requiring approval of a special development permit from the Planning Commission. And so our proposal is to reduce those setbacks when adjacent to low-density residential zones, which we classify as our AG, our AR, and our RD1 through RD10 zones, to 15 feet if it's a single story, that would be sides and rear, and 25 feet for two- to three-story buildings. And then when a project, oh, in addition, we'd also have restrictions on height and number of stories for projects adjacent to LDR, which would be a maximum of 40 feet or three stories in height. And then for projects that are adjacent to other multifamily zone districts or commercial zone districts, those setbacks would be further reduced from 10 to 10 to 15 feet, depending on their number of stories, as well as allowing for increase in stories and height. And I know your board has lots of questions about this.
I do have questions about this. Again, represents a big change. And I, you know, I'm looking at the chart, oh, that you just brought up. I was looking at it in the staff report. And certainly looking at the illustration that you show there, which are, you know, that picture you showed on the last slide, which is great. I mean, I think we need more projects like that one on the bottom. I mean, I'd love to see some of those. But with these changes in the setbacks, there's no distinction between whether this is on a larger street or really an interior neighborhood street. They'd be the same regardless. Is that right?
That is correct. There is a provision that pertains to some additional allowances if located on a marriage or arterial. But for the most part, the standards that are listed on this slide would apply to both local residential streets as well as larger streets. But I would like to point out, as shown in this slide, the design standards that are being proposed in Chapter Three of the design guidelines do have additional requirements that we are hoping that by combining those would create sufficient buffers from the adjacent residential properties as well as articulation. So for example, we require that each building utilize at least three different materials on their exterior to try to give architectural articulation. try to give architectural articulation. When buildings are 10 feet or closer to each other, we require that those buildings be staggered on the lot, so that they're not just providing, you know, a huge wall of buildings. Articulation within the building, so that you don't have large expanses of blank walls, so that within every 20 feet, there's a window or some sort of architectural element, so that we do end up with something much more similar to the bottom picture, along with landscaping requirements of a minimum of 7 feet of landscaping along all the interior perimeter with screen trees planted 30 feet on center.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And we had that discussion on Monday as well, and I appreciate that that's something we could impose on projects to maybe offset some of the concerns with the setbacks. But, so these setbacks, did you ever have a discussion or maybe consider in areas where you're going to lower those setbacks, kind of like with the multifamily housing, make it where they're eligible for a decrease in the setback under a review process and under certain discretion? I mean, instead of making it by right. I mean, that's something I've been thinking about a lot as well, since our discussion on Monday. Because I, you know, it's funny, even that picture you show, I just envisioned, Wendy, we talked about this the other day, about, did you show some hypothetical situations to the CPAC and the Planning Commissions? Because you're looking at these products there with really great sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, and possibly you're going to be put in the middle of one of these old suburban neighborhoods where there are none right now. And it's going to be very, going to be very tough to kind of soften that with, I think, design standards. You know, in these communities that I mentioned before are already kind of the area that land use planning forgot in many, many ways, right? And I don't want to see more of that hodgepodge environment there. I don't know if I'm, you know, making much sense here, but. And we also had the conversation in the context of some of the comparisons you made with other counties. And I think our unincorporated suburban areas, you know, they bear very little resemblance to some of those, but just some of my thoughts.
If I could just piggyback on it, just because when we did the special development permit a few years ago, and bundled exceptions and variances and setback deviations and parking reductions, that all got bundled in. The whole idea was, is that you would still, you'd provide additional flexibility, so that applicants could come in there and look to do a design that would be creative, but you'd still have an accounting through a discretionary process for what those impacts might be. And again, recognizing that, you know, maybe the neighborhood is going to be just fine with it, and maybe that's what the developer wanted to do. But now, we're going to a point here where you're going to basically break down a lot of that structure and just say, it's okay, as long as you do X. Now, yeah, I guess it's simple if you're the, you know, the proponent. But what was the purpose? And again, you weren't here, Wendy, I don't think of that. But when we did the special development permit with the code update back in the mid-part of the last decade, and even before that, where we were streamlining, that was the whole idea, make it more efficient, could bring it all in one package, we could see the whole picture. But we weren't just saying, you just go out there and do it, because you gave then the neighborhood, the community, opportunity to weigh in on some of these factors. And we've seen some really good projects come through. And again, I've given you both an example of one where we worked with the neighborhood using that process and got concurrence and agreement. The project has yet to be built, but it worked out well. It worked out well for the developer. It worked out well for the neighbors. And you took into account those things, and you still had, you know, significant reductions in setbacks, some parking reductions, height deviations and so forth. I don't know if it was a height, I take that back, maybe it was a height deviation. But so, why now? I mean, has a special development permit not worked out in a way that is sufficient, both in guarding for, you know, existing development, and, and I say guarding from the standpoint of people that buy into a single-family neighborhood and have certain expectations, but also allowing for new creative innovative designs that may match what we see in other, you know, urban and/or other suburban areas. But I would agree with Supervisor Desmond. It's going to be a new approach, and if they don't have some say-so in this, I mean, it's not going to be this board member, but some board members are going to, and probably the gentleman to my right, who's going to be most affected, and potentially Supervisor Frost, and some, you know, who succeeds me. I just, I just think that, I guess I need to know, Todd, why such a dramatic, I guess, movement? And maybe in your eyes and Wendy's, it's not dramatic at all, but.
Right. So, Todd Smith, your planning director here. So going back to the zoning code update in 2015, the last major overhaul, the intent there was to combine the variances, the exceptions, all those things into a single entitlement type, so that it would be simplified for those types of projects that needed that. In this case, what we're trying to address is, with respect to multifamily, is the ability of properties and property owners who have that zoning to actually exercise the zoning in the way that it was intended, without going through an entitlement process. And so, obviously, there's some sensitivity about that, based on this discussion. And we can certainly revisit the approach to the setbacks, if that's the desire of the board. But that was the intent with this effort on the multifamily specifically.
If I could just, one note, though. I think the thing that gets taken out that's probably even more critical than, you know, simplifying it in a way that's understandable and so forth, is that the only level of review is as a staff level. And if there is a hiccup, there's no provision for any hearing body, certainly not the Board of Supervisors, and in some cases, we've already delegated that to the zoning administrators, the Planning Commission. So there's no way, basically, it is what it is, and this, and anything we do here is the hearing. And if we put that in place, then that's the way it is, unless it's changed at a future date. And so I guess, that's probably the most critical factor from my perspective. Not that the, you know, neighborhood always dictates what's going to happen there. That's the responsibility of your elected representatives, and those that are appointed, and those that are professionals. But I see that as being a big hole, that, again, and not in every case, and maybe only in the exceptional case, but when it blows up, it blows up, and then you say, well, you can't do anything. It's just, you know, Wendy and Todd, you're given that charge, and here's what it says in black and white, and this is what the Board of Supervisors approved in, you know, July of 2022. And that's, you know, this is the Bible that guides us in what we do. And there is no appeal. There's no way to get any recourse. I think it makes it difficult, and I'll speak from experience, if you don't have some ability to then work with the party, that's the applicant, that's trying to do a project that may be seen in the staff size to be a very positive one, maybe even the supervisor, but also working with an affected neighborhood, or a community planning group, or it might even have been a neighborhood association or whatever. And not every neighborhood is the same. And this becomes more of a cookie cutter with some iterations of, you know, I guess ministerial discretion, in that you call out certain standards that give you some flexibility. And so I see that as being a key issue. Maybe that's not of a concern to, you know, the majority of the board here. But I think, once we give that away, it'll be difficult to close that door anytime in the future, so.
Ask a question, you know, maybe, Todd, our planning director. I love how you introduce yourself. I'm your planning director. I think it's great. Could we bifurcate, I mean, if it's the will of the board to move forward, but maybe hold off on the provisions relating to multifamily housing in 5, 7, and 10, and the setback standards, and maybe ask to come back and provide us some ideas on how we could maybe preserve some of that review process that we're talking about? Because I think we're all in agreement that we want to, we want to make it more available. We don't want to completely eliminate any of the opportunity for CPACs or Planning Commission to weigh in. Is that possible?
It is possible. And staff has had some discussions with County Council, leading up to today's meeting. Excuse me. That is possible, as long as we clearly identify which pieces we want to collectively, as the board makes a decision, which pieces we want to hold over, and which pieces we want to proceed with, so that we have a very clear, obviously, in the record. And as we may need to make some changes to the ordinance that's in the staff report package, we want to make sure that that is accurately reflecting the board's desire.
And I have a document that, at the end of my presentation, can go over with your board, and then we'll give you some options with that.
Okay, thanks.
So if you're comfortable with.
We have Supervisor, Supervisor Kennedy, so.
Thank you, Chair. Just so I can continue to interrupt your presentation, I want to say that I understand Supervisor Natoli and Supervisor Desmond's concerns, and I respect them. But I, you know, with our, you know, falling behind in arena needs and our need for housing in this area, I hope that if we do this, if we put things off, we do it in the most expeditious way possible, because we're way behind here. We're not, you know, going, if we slow this down, it's not that we're, we're not playing catch-up. We're way behind. So I just want to say that if we do slow things down, we do it in a way that is as minimalistic as possible, because we, this community needs more multifamily housing. We need more affordable housing. We need more opportunities for housing for people. And we can talk all day long as government and bureaucrats and, you know, never get anything done. So I just want to say that the urgency is there, and, you know, I'm all for respecting my colleagues' needs or desires for their constituents, and I do. But let's not put it on a back burner. Let's keep it on the front burner.
So I'm putting a pin kind of on this item, and I'll hopefully be able to get through the rest of the slides, and then we can come back to this topic and discuss some of the options that staff has for you to consider.
Plenty of engagement, so that's, you know.
I'm loving it, actually. This is a great presentation for me. I'm in my element. So just some of the other quick ones was, there was some reduction in private open space requirements. We had some weird nuances where it depended on if the project was attached or detached, and staff had a hard time implementing that. So we're going with just a straight 25%. Minor reduction in parking requirements just for the single bedrooms. We had a 1.5 parking requirement for one bedrooms, one for studios, and then a weird 0.6 for guest parking. And so we made that more uniform, where it's one parking space for studios and one bedrooms, and a 0.5 for guest parking across the board. And then also, per your board direction in December, we're recommending that ADUs by right be 1,200 square feet. So that, we are actually in the process also of preparing some pre-approved accessory dwelling unit plans. We're working with an architect and our building department to master plan some of those in three different sizes, one of them allowing for 1,200 square feet. This slide right here, and there is an attachment 4, that gives several scenarios where we just randomly selected various infill lots within the county, looked at their zoning, and what they could currently, basically, what their buildable area would be based on our existing development standards and setback requirements, and what they would be at our proposed setbacks, which it sounds like we'll be modifying. And we can do some more analysis, if needed, on what that would do. Chapter 6 has the new minor-level special development permit, SPM, or as some people refer to it, a SPAM, for requesting a deviation from development and design standards. But it is a pretty narrow focus. Initially, when we went to both the CPAC workshops and the original Planning Commission workshop, we didn't really have any parameters around it, because we were looking for input from those recommending bodies on kind of what they felt was appropriate. And based on some of their comments, we came back with a cap of 25% of the development standard. 25% is a common number that we use throughout our zoning code. We currently allow for administrative approval of parking reductions of up to 25%. 25% is often used for determining an ancillary use versus primary use. So, in the planning world, at least for Sacramento County, 25% seems to be a magic number for us. So, for example, if a project requested a deviation from their required front yard setback, which is 20 feet, the maximum deviation that could be requested under the SPM would be five feet. It would also be limited only to accessory dwelling unit development standards and multifamily residential projects. We're kind of treating this as a pilot program, and if it works out well, then potentially, we could expand it in a future update to other projects, such as commercial or industrial projects looking for minor deviations. Projects requesting extensive deviations greater than the 25% or not addressed by the provisions for the SPM would still be elevated to the zoning administrator, or in certain circumstances, to the Planning Commission or board, depending on the type of entitlement needed. And so the goal of this was both in reducing cost and time for housing projects. Let's see. This next one is about the state density bonus law. This one really did follow pretty closely what the state legislation requires us to do for density bonus projects. And so there are some new types of projects identified by the state. Previously, it was only age-restricted and low-income affordable housing projects. Now they have some criteria for foster youth-type projects, projects focused on disabled veterans, people experiencing homelessness, as well as low-income college students. They have increased the maximum density bonus that someone can apply for from 35% to 80%, when 100% of the project is being proposed to lower-income units. There's still a cap of about 25% on some of these special use categories.
Wendy, can I just ask you, so on the 80%, so, for example, and there was this discussion, I think, in one of the previous documents about, effectively, RD20 would be treated as like RD30. But if you were zoned RD20, then you would be at pushing, what, 35, 35 units breaker on RD20? And if you're RD30, you'd be pushing 50-plus units allowable?
So it is based, the increase is based on the percentage of affordable housing units you're providing. I'm looking for the table in the document.
Just tell us what page, tell us what page I'm going to go to.
So I'm using the red line strikeout ordinance, just because that way I can see the changes. So if you go to page 84 of that document, Exhibit A of that document, you will see a table that shows, in the first column, the percentage of affordable units that the developer would have to provide. And then when you go across, depending on if they're providing it for very low income, low income, or, for example, senior citizens, it will show the maximum density bonus they can obtain, based on the level of affordability or percentage of affordability.
So what's the, what are these cutoff lines here, up above?
That means that where there's an X at the top.
Yes.
So, for example, if you are low income, you have to be providing at least 10% of the units at a low-income affordability.
That's where you start from.
That's where you start from, correct. So if you're only providing 5%, you don't get any density bonus in that case.
And for low-income college students, you have to start at 19 or 20%?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I had a question about the foster youth designation here, in terms of the new project types. Seems to me that, and I suspect there's probably different types of foster youth housing circumstances. So I suspect there's probably single-family, foster youth, sheltering, as well as group quarters, sheltering. So, of course, the activity of accommodating foster youth is, I believe, is just a matter of, you know, for instance, a family taking in some foster, a foster youth, or foster youth, plural. So because that's an activity that doesn't necessarily run with the land, how does, and a density bonus obviously does, it's permanent. So how, how does that get implemented? So if you say, hey, I'm a licensed foster youth sheltering home, or a group quarter facility, what's the timeline? What if they then become something that's not accommodating foster youth, but the density bonus is permanent? So can you address that?
Correct. So, of course, the state was not eminently clear when they created some of the.
What?
When they created some of these categories. To the best of my ability, it's my understanding that this isn't really related to the traditional foster care that you're talking about, Supervisor Serna. You know, my family did foster care, where, yeah, you're a single-family home, you work with the state, you get a child, or two, or three. This, I believe, is more about those programs for the aging out. about those programs for the aging-out foster youth, and is intended to provide almost like transitional or supportive housing for that population of, you know, they're still considered children in a way at age 18 until a certain age. So it's meant to more be transitional and supportive housing, or group living in apartment-type complexes for that population. I don't believe it was envisioned that it was meant to be for the traditional foster youth family.
I appreciate the clarity, but that still kind of doesn't answer the question, because even that more specific type of foster youth accommodation, for those that are about to age out, that could change. And here, we're talking about a density bonus which is permanent. So I guess the question is, even for that very specific type of youth accommodate, or foster youth accommodation, is there some covenant that runs with the property that says thou shalt, you know, accommodate aging-out foster youth for no less than 50 years? I mean...
Yes, there is. Just a second. We require an agreement. It's page 96 of the Red Line Strikeout document. It's called the Affordable Housing Agreement. And so a developer, regardless of which category they're going into, would have to enter into an agreement with the county. More than likely, it would be in concert with SHRA, because they tend to be our affordable housing provider and do a lot of the regulatory agreements for us and verifying of income, et cetera. There is also requirements for how long the project needs to be, needs to remain affordable to that specific population. So currently, in our zoning code and prior to state law changing, the affordability requirement was 30 years. It has now been bumped up to 55 years if you're applying through the state density bonus program for this project. So what I would imagine would happen is someone would come in, they're saying they're doing transitional housing for aged-out foster youth, folks experiencing homeless, or whatever the population is. We would make sure they met the criteria, and then as part of that, before they could begin construction, they'd enter into the Affordable Housing Agreement with us, and we'd have restrictions on the property that they continue to do so for the 55 years.
Great. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Chair. This is for the CEO, or perhaps Deputy Chief County Executive, Katari. Following up on Supervisor Serna's question, it sparked, was this, and perhaps with your background, you will be ready to answer this, was this foster youth designation kind of a way of addressing the, when the state came down and took away group homes and that type of thing? Will this alleviate that issue in any way?
I got it. Thank you. No, thank you for that question, Supervisor Kennedy. So I don't think so entirely. What I'm thinking it's more related to is when AB-12 and legislation like that was passed, and we started to identify that foster youth aging out of the system needed more care up to the ages of 24, 25.
So it's more T youth stuff?
It's more T youth related.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
The correct answer, but not the right answer.
Good question. Okay. Wendy, go ahead.
All right. We're getting close. So some of the other housing changes are related to various legislative bills that were passed, and staff is catching up on getting those incorporated into our zoning code. The first is the emergency shelters. Believe it or not, there was another bill called SB-2, as well as AB-101. And so we're proposing to amend our code to allow for low-barrier navigation centers, which is a housing-first model. There's a definition provided in our zoning code that further defines that. And the modifications that we are proposing with regard to both emergency shelters and low-barrier navigation centers are pretty much just following what the state mandates are for those uses. For permanent supportive housing, there is also legislation that required that we treat those types of facilities and uses in the same manner that we would any other residential use that it's similar to. So if they're doing transitional housing in a multifamily type of development, they have to follow the same multifamily standards we would for market rate, or if it was a single-family subdivision, same thing. And while I don't believe that we were prohibiting it, HCD pointed out in our housing element update, we were not clearly defining it either. And so we now are defining it. And then Chapter seven adds the additional definitions regarding various legislative changes, what, you know, what we mean by the low-barrier navigation center, the supportive housing, as well as some changes to help better modify and clarify language. For example, HCD is requiring us to now add back in a definition of what a family is, when years ago, they made us remove it all from our zoning codes. And then lastly, there are several administrative and process amendments. The first is with creation of the SPM. We will obviously need to create application forms, information on our website, update our user guide. So those things do not require your specific board approval. It's more of how do we implement the changes that your board adopts through the zoning code, so that the public, as well as our staff, can easily understand what the requirements are and apply for any necessary permits. So that's it for the zoning code changes. Then we also, as I mentioned, are asking to repeal and replace Chapter three of the county-wide design guidelines related to multifamily. And we're moving to objective standards, which are required through SB-330. And so we're calling them design standards instead of design guidelines. We also took a look at consolidating the guidelines. We previously had 41 topical sections. We've reduced that down to 17. We also looked at areas where there was either conflict between the design guidelines or standards and our zoning code, or repetitive information, and eliminated some of that redundancy. There was a change in project applicability to multifamily standards from eight dwelling units per acre, and up for both single-family and multifamily, to multifamily only with two or more units. Unfortunately, I don't see Chris here, so if you have a question on what that means, I would have to get response from him for you. But I think it has to do with when we require a more robust design review process when we're reviewing projects. I believe now, depending on the density or the type of project, we require a different level of design review when they're going through their subdivision map.
Wendy, I have just a quick question. So it may be moot, depending upon what the board does with certain things we've already talked about. But in my briefing with you and Todd, I had subsequent conversation with Todd, that in adjusting the setback requirements or permissiveness of certain distances, one of the things that has been an issue in time regarding the interface between single-family and multifamily is placement of balconies, so that, you know, and in some cases, numerous balconies that look down into, you know, established rear yards, side yards, but also then window facing, you know, clear story versus, certainly allow for light and air, but, you know, don't necessarily have direct, you know, views down into established residence and so forth. How is that incorporated into it? Is it an option, or is there a direct linkage that if folks sought to get within certain distances, and maybe, again, maybe moot, because maybe that will come back on something like that. But I do think that that needs to be part of the consideration. If you're going to permit by right in particular, now if you're going to do some level of review, then you get a chance to look at that. But if it's just going to be a staff-level review, and you really can't tell them they have to, that's different than having something's discretion, where you can, you know, either you and/or some other hearing body could make those adjustments based upon neighborhood importer concerns.
Certainly. So, let's see, page 13 of the design guidelines, which is Exhibit B of the Red Line Strikeout ordinance, has some pictures regarding building orientation. And Item number four does require that buildings shall be designed to have offset windows between facing building elevations. Now, there are some caveats there, that once a building is more than 20 feet away from another building, or across common landscape areas, that provide a reasonable measure of privacy screening, then that becomes less of an issue. So we are looking at window placement, and I know there's also something about porches and encroachment, too.
Let me just stop on the first response. Is that for the lot you're looking at, or does that pertain to any of the external-facing and/or adjacent lot lines? What you're saying between building design, you're talking about building to building. I'm talking about, I got a home next door, and you're proposing to put this apartment, and the sightline is into the rear yard of that adjacent. So, again, I just want to be clear. So is it internal or internal/external?
It does not specifically specify, but I believe we could easily add a statement saying that regardless of whether the building is on the project site or an adjacent property.
Because that's the way I think you're going to counter the issue. I mean, if I'm a renter, I can decide if I want to live there or not. But if I'm a homeowner, yeah. Okay. And again, maybe it's something I only got a bundle of detail here today, but...
So off like that, that could be a change.
Do you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right.
And you were looking at porches and balconies, you said?
Porches and balconies. Thank you. It says, "The following features of a multi-unit structure shall articulate facades facing the street, public realm, their alley, or common open space and parking areas." This is on page 12, Item C, Design Standards. And it includes things such as the building or unit entries, stoops, balconies, patios, shade features, or canopies. So the idea is that, yes, those types of items should be facing towards their, their public realm and whatnot, but there is not something specific about them within proximity to the, to the property line in the zoning code. There is an allowed encroachment for porches, stoops, patios, windows, and bays into the setback. That is an area, when we talk about options, we could exclude those from, those encroachments from properties adjacent to LDR.
Again, maybe as you, I don't know what your list is about what you may extract and allow us to move on today, but those would be points I think you would want to refine in your review, rather than just try to do it at the podium, certainly with staff, working with individual supervisors, and maybe a revisit to the CPACs as well, at least some of the CPACs.
All right. Let's see. All right. So this kind of gets back to what you requested early on, Supervisor Natoli. It's kind of a recap of some of the comments we received from both the CPACs and the Planning Commission at the workshop. So in spring 2021, we did bring a summary of the proposed amendments to all of the CPACs. And then this has the wrong date. It shouldn't be April 14, 2022. It should be September of 2021. The Planning Commission held a workshop, and some of the comments that we received was they wanted to ensure that our amendments did not result in more hurdles to the development of missing-middle housing. Some of this did pertain to a little bit of the concern about multifamily within those lower-density zone districts. But at the time, we were also proposing a general plan amendment to policy LU-5, which currently requires projects of 10 or more units to be at least at 75% of the base density. And we were proposing to drop that down to projects of three or more units. The commission had a lot of concern about that policy. And then also in lieu, or in lieu, in light of our countywide rezone project, we pulled that item, and we'll revisit the general plan, update policies as we get farther along with the county rezone project. They also wanted us to, just like your board, consider the potential for negative impacts on adjacent single-family residential developments when, when adjacent to each other. Initially, when we went to the commission workshop, we actually did have smaller setbacks and some infill policies. And so that is where we turned around and did create a larger setback for projects adjacent to residential. So as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, if you're adjacent to other high-density residential or commercial, the setback is 15 or 10 or 15 feet, depending on the number of stories you are, or the zoning district you're in. So we bumped that up to 15, and then 25 for two and three stories. So it sounds like that might not be enough of a bump up, and we can discuss that in a few minutes. We also added in the height and story restrictions based on the comments from CPAC and the Planning Commission. They wanted us, we also had proposed some additional reductions to parking, and they wanted us to reinstate those. They were comfortable with the changes we were proposing to the one-bedroom units, but we were proposing some, some additional reductions for two- and three-bedroom units as well. And that did not go over well at either the Planning Commission or CPAC. And then the request to restrict the extent of deviations that could be allowed under the new minor special development permit, which we did do. So for environmental review, we did prepare an initial study and negative declaration for this project. It was released for public review on February 15, 2022. We did have to do a minor revision based on some of the changes that we, we made between the draft document and the one that's before your board today. The initial study is relying on tiering provisions of SUCA under Guideline Section 11152, and is tiering off the 2030 General Plan EIR. And the initial study discusses impacts to land use, population, housing, aesthetics, noise, public services, transportation, air quality, hydrology, water quality, geology, biological resources, cultural resources, energy, and greenhouse gases. All the impacts from this proposed project or code amendment were determined to be less than significant, and that's primarily due to the fact that we still require discretionary entitlements for a lot of the types of development that were being proposed, or where we were permitting by right. We were really kind of restricting the number of additional units that could occur. I think before I go into the recommendation for your board, now would be a good time for us to maybe talk about some of the options based on comments that I've received from you today. I'm going to go ahead and pass out this handout. Did I keep one for me?
Members of the board, while Wendy's distributing those, and Flo is distributing those, I just want to make sure that we're clear as we're trying to receive this direction. I've taken some notes regarding multifamily setbacks, possibly revisiting that. And I think that sheet that Wendy's passing out speaks to some of the opportunities or options there. The other piece that I have written down is the design guidelines discussion, Supervisor Natoli, related to balconies, clear-story windows, et cetera, adding some language in the design guidelines. And then I, as we get into this discussion on the multifamily setbacks options, want to throw out for consideration and feedback the idea of, I think someone mentioned possibly either retaining some discretionary authority by some level of hearing body versus a by right. And in the conversation here, I'm thinking through whether the special, or excuse me, the minor SPM entitlement that's new, whether that would be an option to consider as part of this as well, as it relates to the setbacks.
So what's up on the screen right now is a snapshot of our existing zoning code, and I highlighted in the yellow box our multifamily residential, which, as I mentioned earlier... earlier, currently only allows multifamily in RD10 with approval of a use permit to the zoning administrator. Given some of the concern your board has raised, as well as comments from the recommending bodies, a potential solution would be to just modify the table that's in your package so that instead of allowing by right, we just go back to allowing for multifamily in the RD10 zone. However, as Todd mentioned, if there is some consideration for allowing for perhaps the smaller 10 units or fewer product type with a discretionary entitlement in that zone district, I believe based on prior conversations I had with June, that would be allowed. There's a codes, a government code section. Sorry about this. Government Code Section 65857, that authorizes the board to approve, modify or disprove the recommendation of the Planning Commission. There is a section about sending items back to the Planning Commission unless the Commission also had concerns or discussed those proposed changes as well. And so I had June look at notes that we had from the Planning Commission workshop as well as excerpts from the Planning Commission staff report. And she was relatively comfortable that we could make some minor changes to this section as well as the setback section and still be consistent with the prior Planning Commission's recommendation. So I guess at this time, I would ask your board for input on whether you would just want us to pull this section out completely right now, and we could revisit it with a future zoning code update, which would go back through the CPACs and the Planning Commission and come back to you. Or if you wanted to allow for a level of entitlement and not allow by right for the RD, it would be primarily for the RD5 and the RD7.
I assume I didn't just punch up, but could you run through the legend here? I don't, this legend's not clear to me what you have on here. What's the P with the little whatever that is? And then there's a, and some other, it looks like a four square or something or other. What is all that?
I apologize. When I screenshotted these out of the code this afternoon to quickly put this together for you, the little red squares, I think are just showing, when you're in your Word document and you have the little P sign for paragraphs and breaks highlighted, I did not turn that off before I screenshotted. So.
Those are formatting marks.
They're formatting marks that basically just show a space.
Paragraph symbol, yeah.
Okay. So, all right, that helps me at least kind of understand what's on the page here. So Rich, you had some questions and then we can.
So thank you, Wendy, for preparing this. Oops, I just lost. I can see it better on the screen here than this, on my glasses. But so with, and the five and the seven, those are the ones that, you know, certainly concerned me the most, too. But you're, is this your proposal down here on the bottom? You could make it a conditional use permit for multifamily housing in RD5 and 7, or possibly going up to conditional use permit by the Planning Commission. What are the options?
So what I'm showing on the screen right now would be just not allowing multifamily in RD5 or RD7, basically keeping status quo with what we currently have, which would be multifamily in RD10 with a use permit to the zoning administrator. So that's what's shown on this screen. But your board would have some discretion if you did want to continue to consider multifamily in RD5 and RD7 today and having a discretionary entitlement.
And I'd be okay with that. I mean, again, like I mentioned earlier, having a path for that as long as there is that level of discretionary review.
Okay.
At five and seven.
So then kind of to carry that dialogue on, I probably need to make sure that your board is clear in understanding that the special, the minor special development permit is similar to a minor use permit. It does not go before a hearing. We typically do send out notice to neighbors and they can comment, and then it's approved at an administrative level. And that's why it's a very low-level and low-cost entitlement. Our lowest-level hearing entitlement would be the SPZ, which would give people an opportunity to speak at both a CPAC as well as the zoning administration hearing. The SPM would not go through the CPAC or a hearing process.
Okay. Those are important distinctions because you kind of gave us this choice, this, you could retain it as is, which basically doesn't provide a pathway, or retain a pathway, recognizing where staff was on this, that you use, you know, SPM or maybe SPZ. I guess I would just, feedback from this board member would be, is you could go to the Planning Commission, or if you want to go to SPZ and then allow it ultimately appealable to the board. We've done that in a couple cases. So again, I just think, again, this is going to be new. It may, it may find good favor with folks, but the kind of either or that you gave us, I for one wouldn't pick either one of those. I mean, you could just say status quo, but that doesn't really, I think, advance the conversation we've had here today. But I do think retain some ability for the board, if ultimately came down to that, to have that come on appeal. And I think we have a couple of cases where we've allowed that to go from the zoning administrator to the board versus to the zoning administrator to the Planning Commission. Again, it's not because I don't have confidence in the Planning Commission. I just think that if you're going to have contention around it, maybe your best, particularly in some of the early years, and maybe it's, you know, maybe it's a point that never gets raised, but I'd say, you know, good if that's the case, but I'm not so sure that's going to be the case. So I guess I would be for retaining, allowing you to go to the zoning administrator, but if there's a big issue about it, people could bring it to the board, to the board in the RD5, RD7 zones.
I'm going to have to look over to Lisa because that would be a change to the appeal procedures in the zoning code, which we did not address at all with this package.
Right. And so that would not be something that you could do today because you'd have to revise the ordinance.
Yeah.
Well, how do we get the two choices she gave us? Like status quo, I get, but how, did we modify on the flip?
Well, I think the determination and June is Powell's maze is on the line. She's worked on this more extensively than I have, are non-substantive changes.
Yeah.
So for introducing an ordinance, I'll let June speak to it.
Thanks. This is June Powell's maze, Supervising Deputy County Counsel. And one of the reasons that the changes Wendy suggested were acceptable is because the CPAC had a robust discussion about some of these issues. I mean, not the CPAC, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission had a robust discussion about these issues. And so having changes that are consistent with the discussions at the commission meeting, things that were previously considered by them would not necessitate a return to the commission because of a modification by the board today. Now, were you to take more drastic measures and drastic steps that were not considered or contemplated by the Planning Commission or at the Planning Commission meeting, then the modification necessitates a return back through that whole process, including a Planning Commission meeting.
So could I get clarification? Status quo is okay. That's departure from what is being recommended. And if we wanted to retain some discretionary control beside, beyond the minor SPM, then it requires going back to the commission? You can't say that it's appealable to the commissioner or to the board? That's what you're saying? At least under the current process? You can't.
I believe.
Go ahead.
The use permit to the zoning administrator may be appealable to the commission. Let me just double check.
That is correct. June, while you're looking at that, the zoning code for entitlements that go to the zoning administrator are appealable to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is the Planning Commission.
Very good. So to answer your question, Supervisor Natoli, if you went with the recommendation on the right of the handout that Wendy gave you, where the RD5, 7 and 10 would be eligible for the multifamily with a use permit to the zoning administrator, if people were not pleased with that, they could appeal it to the commission. But the commission would be sitting as the Board of Zoning Appeal.
Could you add a layer? I mean, we've tried to streamline that so you didn't go to, have to go to both. Could you add a layer where it could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and then would be appealable to the board? Go to the Planning Commission and then to the board?
So you can do anything, whatever the will of the board is can certainly happen. It's just a matter of whether we would need to take that change back to the Planning Commission.
So would that change require going back to the Planning Commission? That's my question.
Like, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Because the key, the key, I think, that we have to be cognizant of is trying to kind of walk that fine line between cost effectiveness for the builders and keeping the entitlement costs lower and still allowing some oversight and review by the county.
Last comment I'd make to that, though, if you keep the status quo, you don't even have the option. So there's not, you know, you're not going to even apply, you're not going to even get an appeal because it's prohibited. And we're trying to find here is a way that would allow a pathway, in probably most cases it would be, you know, fairly smooth, but who's to know? And I guess I just think for benefit, and this is this board's choice, that if you allow it to come to the board via the zoning administrator or to the Planning Commission, you give the option and you're not hampering it, you're incorporating some of the other design standards here and so forth, you're allowing the possibility. But then the only other option, say, unless you go back to the Planning Commission, is just to keep it the way it is. And I've heard myself included, I'm willing to, you know, consider that for a code change, but I still think it ought to be retained at the board level ultimately on an appeal. If a project's that contentious, then the board ought to hear it. That's my view.
Can I ask June a question?
Sure.
June, if they wanted to make it a UPZ across the whole zone section of RD5 through RD10, since we already allow for a UPZ, but didn't change the appeal hearing bodies, do you feel that that would be allowable?
Yes, I think that would be okay.
So it sounds like Supervisor Natoli, we can either keep it status quo, or you could ask us to change it to a UPZ for RD5 and RD7, but then it still, at this point in time, the appeal body would remain the BZA. So it sounds like those are kind of the two choices to take action today, or your third choice would be you leave it status quo, or you leave it what's in our current zoning code, but give staff direction to come back with the changes that you recommended.
And if we chose that route, how long, right, how long would it take you to be able to come back to us for that RD5 and RD7?
Yeah, that one specific issue.
Yeah, right. And move with all deliberate speed.
June, do we have to go back to the CPACs or just the Planning Commission?
I believe it's just the commission.
If that is the case, I am hoping to take a package to the Planning Commission specific to the SB9 urban lot split requirements, end of August, beginning of September.
And of course, we'd be able to move everything else that's in this package. Just withhold that one component, correct? RD5 and RD7?
Well, we haven't gotten to the setbacks, but yes, we pull this piece and keep moving forward with everything else unless there's other components you pull.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so Chair Natoli, just because we've gone back and forth so many times, what exactly is it that you would like to see? And then I would like to hear an analysis of what the Chair is recommending and perhaps Supervisor Desmond is recommending compared to what the current situation is.
So you want a hearing?
I'd like to hear what, yeah.
Okay. Again, what I was suggesting, that if you're going to introduce the multifamily into a possibility in the RD5, RD7 zones, that it would, it could be a use permit that would allow discretionary review, but that only there would be the ability to appeal that to the Board of Supervisors. That's distinction. So it might be a UPZ. Typically, UPZ would go to the Planning Commission, so it would be UPP. But I, again, if there's a way to go to jump that, that's what I'd be fine with that. And if that could be incorporated, you know, timely into the next six or eight weeks.
I'm less concerned about the next six or eight weeks. I'm concerned about the following years and the process that we're setting up here. All right. So what is the, your analysis of what the Chair and Mr. Desmond are proposing to what the current situation is?
Okay. So first, I'm going to recap what I believe I heard Supervisor Natoli say. He's recommending that we come back with a package that says in the RD5 and RD7, multifamily projects, and I'm assuming regardless of whether it's less than 10 or over 10, would require a use permit to the Planning Commission so that they could be appealed to the board.
The only caveat, if you could do from the zoning administrator, so you don't have the extra cost that goes, people worry about cost, if, I guess we could delegate and say you could come directly from the zoning administrator to the Board of Supervisors. So you know, I'm not trying to cut out the Planning Commission, but I'm just saying that controversy, you might as well get it to the board.
I'm not trying to cut anybody. I'm just trying to streamline as much as possible while still maintaining oversight.
Yeah, and I am, too. I was fine with that. Just you don't have to go three levels of appeal.
Right. Okay. So a UPZ, but we would change the appeal provision for that from the BZA to the board, and that would be a significant cost savings because a UPZ is around $9,000 and a UPP is just under 15.
Right.
Okay. So to answer the rest of your questions, Supervisor Kennedy, what is in the package before you, unfortunately, I don't have it up on this screen, and I don't think I have an exhibit that shows that. I don't have a slide that's.
Well, you could put another one of these up and totally confuse me if you're having.
I could probably tell you real quickly what page to go to. Hang on, though. If you go to the red line strikeout attachment, and it would be page six. You will see in that table, the third row says dwelling multifamily, 10 or fewer units, and then the next one is dwelling multifamily, more than 10 units. So what we were initially proposing was if it was 10 or fewer units, it would be allowed by right in RD5, RD7 and RD10. And if it was more than 10 units, it would require a UPZ. In our current zoning code, you can only do multifamily in RD10 with approval of the UPZ.
Got it.
So it's still an improvement?
Supervisor Natoli's recommendation?
It's an improvement over the current situation.
Oh, yeah. Still an improvement?
And I don't, I don't.
Tides come in.
I don't doubt that it would be an improvement. I just, I guess I wonder out loud whether or not we would expect at the board to see a flood of appeals. Because the way I understand it, you, the by right ability based on the 10 units and less scenario could potentially be more controversial in infill situations where there might be some more neighborhood concerns. And, you know, whether or not they get appealed, I guess, would yet be seen, but maybe we should at least ask the question, do we think of our planning staff that we might encounter that the board might get in the regular business of hearing appeals? That's what I'm a little concerned about.
I would agree with that.
So there's two parts to that question. The first is, at least in my.
The first is, at least in my thought process, the first is, what do we anticipate the magnitude of applications for this particular unique type of project? And we haven't obviously done the analysis of exact situations countywide. But I would certainly expect, you know, just based on the history of the types of projects like this, multifamily in existing kind of developed areas, they have tended to be somewhat more, not necessarily controversial, but they do offer a lot of opportunity for public engagement, let's say. And we have a couple of examples of those throughout the county. So I would say, yes, there would be an increase potentially for the Board to hear appeals on the top projects of this type. I can't specify the magnitude of that at this time, though.
Okay. So any other thoughts about it? Well, and again, I guess you'll have, there'll be some opportunity to test this out if, you know, if it finds favor and you're not getting appeals. It's still going to require, it would require folks who would appeal this to pay the appeal fee to get this to the Board, which is no small undertaking. So I think that, but it also allows discretionary review where then staff and supervisor of the district, whoever that might be, has a chance to work with staff, the neighborhood and so forth. And you've got two levels of hearing, and obviously the ultimate won't be the appeal. You might see a few more here, but sometimes you get a better project once it gets here, too. Okay. So any strong objections or feelings? I mean, again, I've stated my, you know, view on it. And Supervisor Desmond, I think you weighed in. Supervisor Serna and the rest of you. This is here for folks, so to get some direction.
I think initially, I was excited about the by right because I felt like it would streamline things and make it a lot easier. But I understand where both of you are coming from. I have the same issue in my district whereby, you know, people want to have some sense of input on things that happen in their community. And so I'm okay with, I think it's, I think maybe we could inch our way, you know, improve the situation without going so far. Maybe that's a, I'm okay with what you're suggesting.
And I'll just say, from a personal perspective, I actually support the by right, but I understand. And this is one part of a big package, so not going to die on the sword.
So for ease of your guys' recommendation, I'm going to suggest that we call this Amendment A or something like that. Would that work for you, Lisa?
Yes, that's fine.
So we can do this today? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we would be, for the time being, for the time being, the package that would get approved would show that we are just keeping it as a UPZ in RD 10. And then when I come back to the Planning Commission in late August, early September, we'll include the modifications the Board talked about today, and then it'll come back to you.
Pretty good. Okay. All right. That simplifies that.
So now for the other discussion. So if you don't mind, I'm actually going to take a seat. I have a bit of a leg issue, and it's starting to go a little numb on me. So what is on the screen and in your handout on the backside of the sheet that was passed out to you is the table as it's currently included in your package with the proposed setbacks, and then the ability on the revised for your Board to make some recommendations on what you feel would be more appropriate setbacks for multifamily projects when they are adjacent to lower density residential zone districts. And June can chime in again, but there was evidence at both the Planning Commission and the CPACs in both the workshop materials and their hearing item that they were concerned about making sure that we were allowing for projects to be streamlined and developed per their allowed densities, but also balancing that with the adjacent residential neighborhoods.
And just thank you, Wendy. So the chart, just explain to me, so on the revised, you just left it open for us to fill in?
I can do this kind of like an auction and be anybody for 30 who's up for 30. It may also be helpful based on conversations. I did not get the impression that one story was much of an issue, but if it is, I left the ability for you to speak up about that. And then there's a blank for the two and three stories. And again, I believe we could break even the two and three stories apart from each other.
And so, you know, my discussions with you the other day, my thought was the same thing. I mean, the setbacks, I'm not, I'm not completely opposed to decreasing the setbacks, but I think of it in terms of the same discussion with respect to the multifamily in five and seven. Why couldn't we also create a path for these that you're eligible for the lower setback, but it still also has to go through a level of review? Maybe not the same level of review we're talking about for the multifamily, but something more streamlined. That was my thought.
So that is built into the existing package before your Board with the special development permit?
Okay. So they'd have to get, they'd have to get that special development permit to be eligible for those.
To go below whatever number that is adopted. So for example, if your Board did 30 feet, a 30-foot setback for two and three-story structures, someone that couldn't meet the 30 feet could apply for a special development permit for a reduction of up to 25% of that setback. I'm not very good at math in my head. Is that about seven feet? So they could get a seven-foot reduction, but it would at least go through a process where the neighbors would be notified. There's appeal provisions, but it wouldn't go through a hearing.
But wait, you're talking about a reduction from the proposed reductions you're already building in?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
No, so I was thinking more they'd be eligible for the smaller setbacks if they went through that process. There'd have to be approval for it.
So.
Makes sense?
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. So we have to establish what the baseline setback is. So whatever the baseline setback is, then they would be able to apply for either a minor special development permit or a special development permit to the zoning administrator, depending on the level of decrease they were requesting.
Okay. So I guess, and I'll phrase it this way, I was thinking, my thought was stay with the current setbacks, and they'd be eligible for the lower setbacks at the proposal with a minor development permit. Is that what it is? The lower threshold?
So it sounds like what you're suggesting is keeping what we have right now in the code and potentially lowering the existing special development provisions in the code to the minor special development permit, which is, as proposed, does not require a CPAC hearing.
Right.
It just goes to the staff level, but there would be notifications to surrounding property owners.
And that would, and going through that process, they'd be able to get down to the proposed setbacks that you've come up with. That was my thought.
So just so I can make your Board aware, what that would mean is that currently, because we have the 75-foot setback, which in some cases makes many of our smaller multifamily sites undevelopable, through the lower hearing process, they would still need almost a 60-foot setback. So you'd be sending them back to the higher hearing body unless they needed a very small deviation.
I'm fine with that.
So just, I'm not saying you can't do that. I just want to make you aware that when you have a 75-foot setback, that the 25% still in many cases is, or the 75-foot setback only being allowed to be reduced by 25% based on projects that we have worked on in the past, they're probably going to need to go to the higher entitlement process because 75 feet is still.
Why couldn't we change the 25%?
Um.
To make it 50% or something? I mean.
June, would that be consistent with the Planning Commission? Because they really wanted some boundaries on how far that deviation could go at the lower level.
Right. That would require, that would be a modification that would require going back to the commission.
Yeah.
Again, I, you know, we seem to be like focusing too much on the next three months. And what we're going to do is going to have ramifications for years. So I'm less concerned about the process of changing the process than I am about the ongoing process.
Good point. I just wanted to throw out an idea because you were asking for suggestions and that, you know, the 15-foot, and we've had in the zoning code, probably not any longer, but at one time where for every 10-foot up, you went 10-foot back and so forth. But here, you're suggesting for the one-story, the 15, two stories and three was 25. But I guess I might throw out the suggestion that you, you know, 15, 30, and 45, and you still get the ability to come in for that 25%. So you could get some encroachment of that. That requires this, that will in of itself require a stepped approach to three stories because it's, you know, it's implicit in that. And I've thought about this since you briefed with me in that diagram about how you might get to it. So for every story you go up, you go back 15 foot, and you still cap it at 40 feet. Actually, you get the benefit. And I would just say for a 40-foot structure with a pitched roof, that structure could be, because you measure the middle of that roof line, that structure could be 50-foot or higher by the time you get to the top of the structure, even though there's not people living at that last portion of it, obviously. But so anyway, Todd, I just throw that out as an idea. Maybe others have ideas, too. But that might be a way to address it. And I think you still retain some control, to Supervisor Desmond's point, and I think Patrick was right on, too, that whatever process we do here is going to be one, probably have some longevity to it. So, Todd?
So there's a couple nuances to what you just said with respect to how we define a structure, and it may get into the allowable heights as well.
Right.
I would suggest that we possibly not try to nail this one down during this hearing if it's going to be that complex.
Okay. Well, that's fine. We still have a pretty lengthy item ahead of us, too, so.
I'm sorry.
All right. So what do you suggest then? Come back to us in what context? Because if you're going to go to the commission with another package.
Right. We don't want to jeopardize that timeframe that we've already established to get it back to the Planning Commission on the multifamily.
Well, maybe you could do this, maybe you could do a discrete item. Could you come back to us? We're going to be back in session in two weeks, maybe even three weeks as well. So is there a ability just to bring that discrete item, give a little more time for you folks to noodle on it? Maybe show a diagram or two, take some of the suggestions here, show some examples and come back, and we can just continue this one piece and take the rest of this?
Why were you suggesting 30? Were you just saying 30 for all three, or you were just throwing out a number, Wendy? Regarding, you threw out a number 30. You were just saying, throwing that out as a suggested minimum, just make that the minimum, and then if they.
I threw out that number just to kind of get the conversation going. If 30 still feels too small to your Board, you know, if you're comfortable with having, you know, 40 feet or 50 feet or as Supervisor Natoli.
Did you mean 30 for all, for two, three, and four-story? For all three or?
It would be for two and three-story. We don't allow for higher than three-story when adjacent to LDR. So based on Supervisor Natoli's example, we'd keep the single story at 15 feet. Then we'd have a greater setback for the two-story and then a slightly higher one for the three-story. His suggestion was 30 feet for two-story and 45 feet for three-story.
And, but then you weren't, you were adding, you know, the wanting to determine by roof, but could we just leave that out and still finish it today by just being, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
What do you think? No?
Let's hear it from everybody.
Can I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I feel like we're kind of stuck here. I like the idea of taking all the blanks in the revised, side by side, the right-hand side here, take all the blanks where you're asking us to help fill them in. And I like the idea that Supervisor Natoli suggested, but, you know, I think he only suggested it for the first one. But do we have enough, does it make sense to maybe wait a couple of weeks or three weeks, whatever, till the next Board meeting where you can give us some schematics and show us options in terms of how to stair-step the setbacks or, you know, or the maximum heights, that kind of thing, and have it correspond to where all these blanks are? That way, I think we're making a real, a much more informed decision because I think it's hard for us to visualize the circum, you know, the consequence of different types of measurements of heights and setbacks and so forth.
That does make a lot of sense to me, Supervisor Serna. I think, like you, I like to visualize what this looks like. And I think we also need to research and determine whether we need to add any other definitions into the code, which then may obviously have the ripple effect of going back to the Planning Commission. So I think we can put together the examples that you're suggesting and others have, and then provide, whatever the date may be, I know we have to do some agenda coordination with CEO and Clerk of the Board. Whatever that timeframe looks like, we can report to you in the interim, just regular communication.
Great. So that's what I would suggest to my colleagues.
And just to your questions, Sue, if we could answer it, if they show a schematic, you could see.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So again, we have the whole package of fours. If we think we can still keep the package together with the exception of the one item, maybe you come back to this, and we'll just keep the whole item here. We're not going to lose much time by holding for two weeks. I don't know. We could like to flow, how about the 20, 27th?
When would we be going?
Or, Anne?
Yeah, we can't do that.
No, they need more time to go back through the review process.
Well, on the one piece, but on this, they didn't know if they had to go back on this piece, right?
I'm sorry, I had two conversations going at the same time, so I wasn't tracking what you were saying. It sounded like you were suggesting possibly taking action on the rest of it, but holding over the setbacks as well as the multifamily.
Yeah, the multifamily, we know it's going to take a few more weeks. It's going to come behind. But this setbacks, I guess to the question, could we, with some refinement here, you said you had to go back and.
Gotcha.
Bring it all, you know, just bring it all back at once.
Bring it back at once is what you're suggesting, separate from the RD five through seven?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Assuming you don't have to go back to the commission, you could bring that back right away.
Yeah.
Right?
August 9th.
Yeah.
August 9th. August 9th.
Good.
All right. All right. Do we, I need to ask, I don't have my sign up in the chambers, but do we have any?
Do you have to have a continuance or anything?
Yeah, we need a continuance. I was going to see if there's any public comments on it.
We do. We have a phone call. Let me just make sure. Ms. Klinger has been waiting very patiently, so I'm trying to see if she's still here. Hi, Ms. Klinger. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
They're still talking, so how can I start to talk?
Oh, I can, I can hear you, Mrs. Klinger. You can start now.
Oh, I start talking even though the Board is talking? Won't I be talking to them flow?
She's watching the tape.
Yeah, you know what, Mrs. Klinger? You hear the, it's, there's a little delay. So what I suggest is just mute whatever you're watching in the background, and if you start talking, you're. And if you start talking, you're, you're, you're in the live meeting.
Do you want me to mute the sound?
Yeah, mute, mute, mute your video. Mute the video or television.
I did, okay, I did.
Hello, Karen, good afternoon. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Well, I certainly have to say that I feel gratified that supervisor Serna and you, Natoli, are asking great questions because until you read Senate Bill 9, Senate Bill 10, Senate Bill 478, I would not sign anything. All neighborhoods, the suburbs have been removed from California, they no longer exist. And gated communities who may be felt safe at one point, they're not exempt from the rules of Senate Bill 9 and 10 and 478. Senate Bill 478 was signed into law prior to the recall, and it removed our covenants, conditions, and restrictions. So all of our neighborhoods can now be subdivided into, well, whatever, whatever the zoning administrator, whatever the Board of Supervisors suggests. So my neighborhood of Arden Park is a target for just about everything that I've read and seen so far. We're also referred to as racially concentrated area of affluence. I would like very much to receive something that Wendy handed out to the board. And something that is handed to the board should also become an attachment to this meeting, but I would like to receive a copy of Wendy's handout with the chart that she gave. I would like to also ask Wendy, what zoning district is Arden Park in? Because that will determine many things. And I believe that the Board of Supervisors will be sued constantly for the changes that your environmental review, your planning departments, your sustainable new department by right is not a public review. It's not due process of law. There's a violation. So the people are really have no, no tongue in the game. It's only what the government wants. It's not what we want. This is not a vision for our neighborhoods. So Wendy is there, is she going to answer what zoning district Arden Park is in? And could you hold the time until she responds, please?
Okay, we'll hold the time. I don't know if that can be answered right away, but we'll try. Wendy, is there any response you could, or Todd?
If I may through the chair. Arden Park is within a neighborhood preservation area. The main zoning code does not typically affect properties within an SPA or NPA. They tend to have their own listed allowable uses and development standards unless they specifically refer you back to the zoning code. Most of Arden Park is either RD three or four.
So are you telling me that?
But they have their own list of development standards.
So you're telling me that Governor Newsom, when he signed into law Senate Bill 478, removing our covenants, conditions, and restrictions that would allow by right any developer or investor to add an additional four to six units to each lot in our neighborhood for any type of housing, not just a duplex? I'm talking about four to six units of any kind. So are you telling me that Governor Newsom, when he signed Senate Bill 478 into law, removing our suburbs, that the county of Sacramento can do whatever they want? I don't think so.
No.
I think when the new legislation that I believe January 1 of this year also was a little frightening when it showed, let me just back up just a minute. One thing I'd like the supervisors to do, because this was, Senate Bill 9 and 10 was very heated. And livable California, please pay attention. You are going to be signing something into basically law that how many people can pay 9,000 or 15,000 to appeal some type of a project that's going on in their neighborhood? Not many people have that money sitting around, not with what, with the increase of taxes in California and gas prices. Now this, let me just read what livable California said. As of January 1, 2022, builders are allowed to wipe out yards, garages, and defensible space in all but the most remote, single-family areas like South Lake Tahoe, Paradise, et cetera. Ignore local density constraints on fire evacuation routes. Senate Bill 9 is blind to climate change, which of course this group is very tuned in for climate change. And turn any block of homes into a series of four-unit projects as long as the builder skips over every other house on the block. A second builder can develop the homes in between. Destroy neighborhood tree canopies crucial to slowing. Well, look at Sacramento, it's horrible here. And because Arden Park is a target for infill development and with the by right, that was the lawsuit. But to challenge Governor Newsom on Senate Bill 478, where he can remove our covenants, conditions, and restrictions, that is a lawsuit that is definitely going to be happening. I'm not too sure the county has the right to do whatever they're saying they want to do. And airspace, who would you buy airspace from? Saicod? Well, Saicod is the one that owns airspace now. So there's so much here that's being said. And Wendy, thank you for your hard work, but I don't appreciate, I don't appreciate, matter of fact, the tool engineering. There was a workshop, matter of fact, what did they call it? A charrette? But anyhow, there's so much to this, the complexity to this, Mr. Kennedy, I would not rush through this. And Serna, thank you so much. And you might want to check on your gated community. It is not exempt from Senate Bill 9 and 10.
Good.
I thank you very much. And please do not take this lightly. Take a long time because this is about you. And when you leave, somebody else comes into your place. The only person that knows the general plan update is retiring, and that's supervisor Natoli, who I highly support, and I hate to see you leave.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Okay, the, just wanted to note, Karen, that the documents you were asking about are online now. The clerk's office had put them up. So what the handouts that Wendy handed out should be available online. Supervisor Desmond wanted to offer a comment.
And you know what, I'm not a techie person, so to make sure that I really receive that within a timely manner, Wendy could maybe take a moment and email that to me.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get it to you, Karen. We'll get it to you.
Karen, this is Rich Desmond. Please follow up with my office because I, we will coordinate a meeting with our, someone from our planning department to answer some of these very technical questions that you have.
I'm not too sure they have the answers because I've never heard them speak up once about Senate Bill 9 and 10.
We'll give them a chance.
And 478.
Okay, well, we're going to give it a shot. Supervisor Desmond's offered to do that, Karen. So, and if we don't have the answers, then we won't have them. But I do think it's a, it's a fair offer if you want to take them up on it. So, okay. Very good. Thanks again, Karen. Any other callers? Okay, all right. So then we'll bring you back to the board. Supervisor Serna?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. So in light of what seemed to be agreement to continue this item, I believe in its entirety to August 9th, I'll move to continue to that date.
Okay, so the motion is to continue this matter to August the 9th. It's been seconded and.
With the express direction that I think staff has received loud and clear about diagrams and schematics.
Sure, okay. But more information to come forward, so is that clear? Okay. All right, please vote.
Unanimous, unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you to our staff. All right, next item.
Item four, approval of the American Rescue Plan Act proposed Phase II funding allocations and project recommendations.
Okay, Anna Edwards subbing in for Amanda Thomas today.
I'm going to ask Metro Cable to switch the PowerPoint, please.
I'm not sure 5 o'clock qualifies as good evening, but maybe. So good afternoon, evening. I am Anna Edwards, county executive, and I'm happy to be before you to talk about the proposed allocations for the second tranche of ARPA funding. So Sacramento County received the second tranche of funding, a little over $150 million in May of this year. As you know, we've received the first tranche of 150 in May of last year. So the county has now received its total $300 million ARPA allocation. The key focus of ARPA funding, as you know, is COVID recovery. Therefore, this allocation has been identified as the one as, that will best address the negative health and economic impacts of specific communities who have experienced this as a result of the pandemic. We will make smart investments that maximize the impact of ARPA dollars, keeping in mind that all allocations must be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and must be fully spent by December 31st of 2026. Our continued vision is to ensure an equitable and sustainable recovery in Sacramento. So in July of last year, as you recall, your board approved priority issues for funding that aligned with results of a community survey. The top four priorities were housing and homelessness, health, and economic response. The county also conducted a comprehensive budget review and priorities by reaching out to the community in October of 21. And this process was administered by a professional public opinion firm in which residents said their top priorities were homelessness and affordable housing. We will support those strategic investment with this proposed allocation with the goal of serving people in traditionally underserved communities in an equitable manner, including those experiencing homelessness, low, low-income individuals and families, older adults, foster youth, and those struggling with substance abuse. The first two priorities recommended for ARPA allocations, housing and homelessness, will assist those who are experiencing homelessness or who have fallen behind in rent or are in need of affordable housing due to the pandemic. We will be returning to the board at a later date for project recommendations for the housing and homeless category. As you know, we are still working on all of the projects that identified for the first tranche, and so we will come back to you at a later date.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt, Ann. Before you leave that particular slide, can you expand a little bit on the intersection of this investment strategy or priority, I should say, with some of the recent concerns and suggestions the board and your office has received about how it involves or helps specifically Black Indigenous and people of color?
Yes, to a degree. Because really, when, as you know, when we focus on housing or sheltering homeless individuals, we target those that are most in need. I believe that the recent homeless point in time count identified that there's a large proportion of people of color who are homeless.
I believe it's specifically the highest for African-American folks.
Yes, I believe so. I don't have that in front of me, but I do believe that to be true. So we will be working on targeting that population for this allocation.
And then can you also confirm that the partnership that we have working through and with Sierra Health Foundation is also specifically focusing on that aspect of it, that kind of the racial equity part of it?
I believe so. I don't know if Siobhan can address that.
Yes, thank you for the question. So Sierra Health Foundation has been contracted throughout COVID with the Department of Health Services to reach out into communities, BIPOC communities, Black Indigenous and people of color communities. And I just wanted to follow up on your first question. So I do have a meeting with public health advocates who I know presented to your board a couple of weeks ago, next week, to talk about some of their ideas and strategies they're proposing that would help us to further that partnership with the CBOs.
So would any part of our decision today foreclose the ability to take advantage of some of their recommendations?
No.
No, it will not.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Today, we're, for the homelessness and housing category, we're just asking you to approve the allocation.
Generally.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, the third priority recommendation for health will experience, help those experiencing health impacts from the pandemic, particularly to underserved communities with a lack of access to healthcare. This will cost 8% of our available allocation and allow investments in mental health and substance abuse treatment program services and access to healthcare for marginalized The fourth priority recommendation focuses on economic response and will assist businesses directly impacted by the pandemic and organizations that served underserved populations. So this will be another opportunity to target the BIPOC community as well. This will also cost 8% of our available allocation and allow investments in direct assistance to small businesses and communities disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. The county is also proposing premium pay for eligible Sacramento County workers, similar to what the board approved with the Phase 1 allocation. This has also been negotiated with most of our labor organizations, with all of our labor organizations. ARPA rules define essential work as onsite with regular in-person interactions with other people or regular physical handling of items that have been handled by others. This will cost 8% of our available allocation and will allow for prioritized compensation of those income-eligible staff who did, in fact, perform essential work. At your April 12th meeting of this year, the board approved the county's use of ARPA revenue replacement as an expenditure category. This category allows the county to claim a revenue loss amount using a formula established by the U.S. Treasury. The revenue replacement expenditure category allows us to spend money on services traditionally provided by a government that would not otherwise be ARPA-eligible. These expenses could include construction of roads and other infrastructure, which was one of the higher priority areas of concern in the county's budget priorities survey in October of 21. This will cost 20%, 26% of our available allocation, and investments in this category will improve road conditions in disadvantaged communities and support transitional housing at Mather Community Campus. We talked a lot about this when we talked about the first phase of funding. Administrative costs are essential to minimize the risk to the county, ensuring a centralized grant management program and verify program and fiscal integrity. This 10% of the allocation, 10% of our available allocation is allowable and will allow continued implementation of projects in compliance with federal rules, maximize our use of eligible funding sources, and ensure appropriate monitoring and control procedures, and provide expertise when complex issues arise. allocations of $5 million for each of the five supervisory districts will account for 17% of the Phase 2 ARPA funding. These allocations will allow you, board members who know your districts and the needs of your districts, to target assistance to particular geographic or underserved communities in ways that are not addressed by other ARPA projects.
Can I interrupt, please? Just to that last statement, I just want to issue publicly the caveat to it, which is, or they can complement or augment the other areas.
Absolutely.
And in fact, I know, I think all five of us have in fact done that with the first tranche that we received from the Treasury.
You are accurate, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, and I think it's important, just put an exclamation point on what Phil said, that, you know, with, you know, even what actions we took on yesterday's agenda, looking at those align with, as you've run through the various elements, what ARPA certainly would target, but certainly we as a county have made as a priority. I think you could look at the alignment, you know, again, COVID-related, but certainly from a community service level and impact to, you know, communities, many of them disadvantaged or certainly underserved or in need of additional, you know, service delivery and programming. So is there, is there some tracking of that, just in the general sense? Because I mean, all of those are coming before the board, coming back under different auspices. But I think it's important because again, you know, there's been comments certainly made in the past that somehow the money was not going in those directions. But it has to go in one of those categories. That's where ARPA, you know.
That's exactly right. And we have, I'm looking to Ms. Thomas, but pretty elaborate tracking systems, I'm, yes.
But again, it may be a way, just rather than having to cite the products all the time, but if you look at those of the district-guided allocations as to, at least in general, where they, where they fit. you look at the district-guided allocations, as to, at least in general, where they fit, so people could take a quick look and say, with the five supervisors, obviously with only board approval, X went to housing or homelessness, X went to economic development, X went to community support or health, or whatever the categories are.
We could absolutely do a summary of all the district-directed allocations.
Yeah, and you don't necessarily have to call each one out. I mean, they're all available, you could do that, too, but just to say, going forward, because we've got another 17% recommended here.
Yes.
To show how those align with the priorities, one that the survey brought forward, what we've heard in these chambers, obviously what you and your staff have brought to us, and certainly, as you've said, but has been said by board members, each and every one, that working with our districts and looking at some of the needs, again, that are related to COVID, but also will help us build our way back out of a lot of the situations that we found ourselves in, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Good, thanks.
So we are also asking for your approval today for initial project recommendations for Phase 2 ARPA allocation. These project recommendations will utilize the full allocation for health, economic response, and revenue recovery categories. We have also accounted for two board-approved Phase 1 advances. The first advance was in the amount of almost $674,000 from the economic response category as a result of the board's funding increases to the chambers of commerce and the P-bids. The second advance was a little over $3.8 million from the revenue replacement category for the implementation of the food insecurity pilot program. As I mentioned earlier, county staff are still refining project recommendations for housing and homelessness and will bring those projects to you at a later date. Today, we are proposing 23 projects totaling $59.2 million, and the department heads that will be overseeing those particular projects will be presenting to you on what those are. And so unless you have questions for me, I will turn it over to Deputy County Executive for Social Services, Siobhan Katari, to prevent the health recommendations.
Thanks, Anne. I don't see any questions at this point. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So I'll present the first five health recommendations, and then I will turn it over to Directors Kayeys and Bedsworth for the other two. So the first one, under the Health Services Department, is a $500,000 match for the psychiatric subacute facility. And as we brought to your board, we were awarded a $24 million grant from the Department of Healthcare Services to build a 64-bed subacute psychiatric facility. This $500,000 match would represent just a small portion of the required 10% match that the state requires. The land that we're going to be building on is county-owned, and that would comprise the other part of that match. So we're short by $500,000 after doing the appraisal, so that would be the match.
Through the chair.
Yeah, sure.
So on that, for that particular project, Siobhan, are you saying that this is the last match that's required for the total estimated budget for the entirety of the project?
Correct, yes, because we are bringing other match to the table.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. The second project is the expansion of substance use treatment services. As I presented before to the board, we have a shortage of residential substance use treatment beds in the county, and we're looking to expand out at least 140 more beds. And so what this money would allow us to do, and it expands upon an investment your board already made during budget, but it would allow us to go out for a competitive RFP process so that providers could either acquire or remodel or renovate facilities that would allow them to build additional bed capacity. It doesn't pay for services; that funding comes from the state and federal government, but it would build out bed capacity. The third project is Arrive Alive, which is a nonprofit organization, and they would help us to further our fentanyl awareness campaign that the board has invested in previously. This would allow us to go into all 12 school districts and reach students, their parents, teachers, as well as community members in those areas with fentanyl awareness and prevention strategies and efforts. The fourth is telehealth through the clinic. So as you know, we run the Sacramento County Health Center, which is a county-run federally-qualified health center, and through that, we serve underserved populations, including homeless populations, refugee populations, and undocumented populations. So during COVID, we've had to expand several different strategies in this arena, expansion of telehealth strategies to allow for folks to receive remote services and also do language interpretation services more remotely. So we're bringing less people into the clinic and serving them more. So this first one around the expansion of telehealth would allow us to build out those capabilities, to continue those into the future. The second one is around staffing, and you may know that we received a grant through HERSA to get a mobile medical van to go out to homeless encampments and provide street medicine. So this would, one of the strategies under this umbrella of staffing, would allow us to staff up to adequately do that and provide more street medicine, and other strategies under this would include expansion of vaccination services, patient care coordination, and outreach.
Through the chair.
Yes, here.
Thank you. So kind of an overall question about some of the projects that are more aligned with capital improvements, but are we analyzing these projects by project to understand which ones come with elevated increased MNO costs and with an understanding that of the MNO costs that may come with it, maybe a portion of it can and will be covered by state and federal pass-throughs versus general fund, so that we understand that when we're making decisions about this to approve, we're clearly making decisions based on understanding that it may have a ripple effect years out on our general fund?
Absolutely, yeah. One of the things that we had to do even to get to this level is ensure that when we're looking at ARPA dollars, we're looking at these as one-time dollars, and that anything that would result in terms of services would be funded in some other way in the out year. So we are absolutely taking that into account.
So that's kind of an overarching directive here, is not to incur additional ongoing general fund cost?
Mostly, yes. There are some projects, particularly in the homeless realm, that we're doing a lot of infrastructure costs and building, which are one-time. There are ongoing service costs, but we literally have very lengthy conversations about every single project in order to minimize any ongoing costs when the funds run out. So the plan is for a couple of years on many of these projects, to get to the end of ARPA, but we're constantly assessing and evaluating how we continue or not.
And I thank you for that. I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing, especially when it comes to our infrastructure, service infrastructure around homelessness, that we take on some additional budgetary responsibility in the long run, because I think we're still kind of behind the eight ball in terms of parity between service delivery and the magnitude of the problem. But I'm glad to hear that we are carefully assessing this so that we don't find ourselves, seven years from now, with extraordinary general fund county costs that are a remnant of decisions made today.
Absolutely.
I can assure you, Ms. Thomas asks us every day, what is your sustainability plan?
Right. Very good, thank you.
And none of these projects I talked about add new county positions, so that even this last category is limited term and on-call positions. Okay, and so with that, I'll turn it over to Director Kayeys.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Kennedy, Siobhan.
Thank you.
For you.
While we're on health, we know that, I mean, these funds all came about because of one reason, it's COVID. And it's been an unfortunately weird position to be in, to have a windfall because of a pandemic, but it's happened, and it's been good for the community. But COVID is not going away. As a matter of fact, we're seeing the numbers rise. Hospitalizations are rising, deaths are rising, the new variants that are coming out. So now be very, very careful how you answer this next question. Are you getting the services that you need to address, not just where we were at when we planned this two months ago, but to where we're looking forward and seeing that projections aren't great?
No, absolutely. You know, during COVID, you're right, we did have a windfall of dollars, and we've been able to build the infrastructure necessary to set up the types of clinics we need, to set up the types of vaccination strategies we need. The state has continued to supply resources directly to our public health team, and in fact, the new budget is giving our public health division an additional $7 million in an ongoing annual allocation that will be coming back to the board with a board letter to let you know how we intend to spend it, with an eye towards knowing the pandemic is not over and we need to continue to staff accordingly. So yes, absolutely, but thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Just to put a finer point on it, if I could, because I was the asker of the question two years ago.
Deja vu from 23 months ago.
But it was Dr. Costeri standing where you're at. So the finer point being, our public health official, I doubt she's on the line, but she would tell us she has everything she needs?
She would say that she has everything she needs, and we're both thankful that the state has put additional resources in, and so we will bring those back to the board, and you'll get some additional requests, but it will be funded with this ongoing allocation.
Great, thank you.
Want me to ask it a third time?
You can ask it a third time.
Thank you, Siobhan.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, Michelle.
I'm glad Siobhan's short, I don't have to make this go up or down. So I am here, next slide, please. Oh, it's me that gets to do it, thank you. Flo's like, do it. So just want to give a little bit of background on this particular request. I think all of you are aware of our centralized placement support unit. It was established back in 2010 and has a dedicated team that conducts comprehensive evaluations of children and youth to determine the most appropriate foster care placement. For 10 years, the placement unit was co-located on the Children's Receiving Homes campus, and because they had a licensed shelter facility, so if we couldn't find a placement right-of-way for a youth, we were able to walk them across campus, and they could stay in the shelter while we continued looking. Over the years, our youth began displaying just more complex needs, mental health challenges, behavioral issues, substance use issues, and many were being psychiatrically hospitalized and then released back to us. And finding placements has become increasingly challenging, and the Children's Receiving Home began declining placements even into the shelter. Because of some safety concerns in the area, just because of the location, we moved our placement unit over to a county-owned building on Branch Center Road, knowing that it was a temporary solution while we continued looking for a longer-term solution. And we think we have found the longer-term solution at the Warren E. Thornton Youth Center. We have a number of young people that stay for extended periods of time because we are simply unable to locate appropriate placements. It's a challenge for us here locally and statewide. What center would provide a much more suitable setting? It's larger, we would be able to ensure strong security to keep the young people safe as well. So we're requesting $3.7 million to make all the building modifications that are needed to create a comfortable space that allows for stronger security.
Question, Michelle. Again, I know you and I have spoken frequently about this, and appreciate the effort going into trying to find a longer-term solution. What sort of capacity are you then allowing for in the Warren Thornton Center with what you're contemplating here?
We're looking at about 15.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like, I think, a 100-bed facility. And then for longer term, also collaborating with behavioral health, as they look at what to do on the other side of the campus, but they're looking at, like, crisis residential unit or children's psychiatric health facility that we think could team up to provide more placement and treatment options for our youth.
Okay, I just see, and going forward, and as you're well aware, we've certainly been meeting with the Rosemont community relative to the subacute, and we've got the senior safe house that's well underway, and Thornton Center exists, obviously, and been looking for some modification, but I do think if there's going to be additional programming to what you just said, and in addition to what's already at Office Building 3 in this interim situation, then I'm going to be very upfront with that community about what we're doing and how we're going to do it. And again, I think, we'll continue to work to be a good neighbor, but we are significantly ramping up services on land that's either been vacated for some time, or buildings have been vacated going back to the recession when we closed Morgan and Thornton, and obviously haven't returned there till now, and I think there's some really good uses, bring some good energy, but it will bring some additional traffic and so forth. But I think if this is now going to be funded in this category, then we probably need to spend some time, again, talking to the community about what we're going to do as far as building alterations, but how the program would operate, and I think it'll be a key part in the security, both for the young people but for our workers and our professionals, as well as for the communities. It needs to be a key part of whatever we do on the staffing side of this. And I guess if you're looking at other things, Siobhan, to relate to this, I know, I think you've talked very high-level with me about it, but if there's more going to be going on with conversion of that facility, maybe we need to have a kind of overall, I say master plans, but not the right word, but an overall sense of what's going to happen from basically the juvenile detention center all the way up to General Services Building on the north end there at Gadia Branch Center. So maybe spend some more time, and again, the community's been very open to certainly the ideas and proposal about the subacute facility, and again, the senior safe house, I'm sure it's a very welcome addition, good neighbors, but we want to keep people informed so they're not surprised by anything that we're planning to do out there. I would just note, too, as we're just talking about setting aside the money, but one of the complaints that came through, having nothing to do with the programming, was when we did construction, it wasn't we, but when we had construction done on the juvenile detention facility, there was at least some alleged impacts to properties adjacent that back up residential properties, and one homeowner told me that he and his family and some others filed claims with the county, and we played our defense on that, and ultimately, they went away unhappy. And so I think if we're going to be looking at a lot of construction along there, some of this will be interior that we're talking about here today, we need to make sure that we're, through General Service, I know Jeff's here in the audience, but we're going to be sensitive to that, because, again, that didn't come to my attention just until recently, but if that was an issue with some of the swimming pools and some alleged damage to that and so forth, and people were not satisfied with the way the county responded on that, if we're going to be building along that segment along there, we need to be aware. Again, that's not so much for you, but I know Jeff's here in the audience, so, anyway. Okay, so what's your timeframe on this?
About a year and a half, is Mr. Gasaway here? Oh, so two years.
Because we have some urgency as it relates to the current situation, and I know I've talked to Anne, and I've talked to you about it, and I've talked to Police Chief Luke in Ranch Cordova, and the calls for service, and again, I haven't had neighborhood calls thus far, but I understand there's a fairly increased number of calls for service, both to our facility but to the immediate surroundings. So I would just say that, I know we got a lot in the works here, but if we're going to go forward with this, for the benefit of those people that are in our care and custody, kind of quasi-custody in some cases, we need to advance this. So Jeff, I know you've got a lot of priorities, but this one is getting a lot more attention from some of the folks, and law enforcement is being very gentle about their commentary, and I know working with Michelle, and maybe looking at some additional security services within and around the building, but there are some growing issues that I just, we've got a lot planned out here, and I don't want to go in sideways, because it's so. Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, thank you, thank you on this one. So if we do this, does this completely alleviate the need for OB-3?
We would just use that for staffing, so yes.
Well, I don't mean, yeah, but I mean for this purpose.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Now I'm going to spitball it here, this is kind of crazy thinking, so I'm going to aim it at our CEO.[1797.36][1797.36][1797.36] Foster care, and this particular population of foster care youth, if we didn't take care of them, they would be homeless, for the most part.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. That was the right answer. So could we use the fact that we have an emergency shelter ordinance or resolution to expedite that two years because we are essentially addressing a homeless population that would not otherwise be addressed?
So I would defer that question to Ms. Travis or Mr. Gasaway because I do not know.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think I can answer that today. I like the concept. We can certainly look into it.
Yeah.
And if so, then we would proceed under that.
Jeff Gasaway, Director, General Services. A lot of that two-year timeframe is design work to be able to put out to bid because of the.
But I know, but under the emergency declaration, we can truncate that, the bidding process?
We could, but again, there's that upfront work that needs to be done. And then depending on the dollar amount, we might be able to expedite it with a JOT contractor. So I'm giving you, right now, off the top of my head, what I know today.
You're giving me Gasaway terms.
Well, I think, and I think.
You know me.
I understand that.
Under-promise and over-deliver.
Yes.
So we'll work to compress that timeline as much as possible.
Thank you.
And if we can use that as an option to help make the timeline shorter, then we certainly would do that.
Let's think about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Bill?
Great, thank you. Michelle, I want to make sure I understand the working relationship once this is, once these improvements are completed and it's actually doing what it's intended to do between it and the Children's Receiving Home, because you started with that. So the Children's Receiving Home is, doesn't have capacity for the demand that's out there. This would augment service to service in terms of what the Children's Receiving Home provides? This is going to provide the same or similar services?
So one of the things we would do, and we will explore as we get this done, is whether or not we want to operate a licensed shelter care facility. Children's Receiving Home is a licensed shelter care facility.
Right.
We stopped contracting with them, so I don't even know if they kept their license. They may or may not have. And so we would explore those options to see, in fact, we already are, just doing cost estimates of what it would take to actually do a county-operated shelter. The only remaining shelters in the county are all county-operated because they can't say no, right? Everybody else can say no. So we will be doing that assessment along the way and we'll be working with the Department of Social Services on that.
Is that going to be completed in time for us to come back with the balance of whatever ARPA funds may be available so that if we need additional funding for that potential or that component, the sheltering component, we could do it with ARPA funds?
Well, I think what we would do is costing out of the staffing that it would require.
Right.
So I don't know if we'd want to do the ARPA funds.
Well, and I would think, and Michelle or Amanda can correct me if I'm wrong, that we could probably use realignment dollars to fund some of the operations of this program.
Yeah.
But even if, again, back to my earlier comment about the general fund, even if it was an additional general fund county cost, I mean, it's such an important service that I for one would be certainly willing to, you know, make that investment, especially if the license by the Children's Receiving Home has been discontinued. So then another question here, on day one, when this is, these improvements are up and running and we have the additional capacity, are we going to, it's going to be 100% filled, so to speak, on day one, or?
It depends on the night. So right now, we have a number of youth that are there for extended periods. They may leave, a lot of times they'll leave and then they'll come back a couple of days later. But, you know, on one particularly challenging night, I think we had 15 youth there, and it has led to increased calls to law enforcement. So it'll depend on the day. Our hope is that we can continue to find more suitable placements statewide, but they have just continued to decline for a number of reasons.
Wouldn't, go ahead.
And I just want to add that this is, as Michelle said, a statewide issue, and we've been having conversations with CDSS because this started as a result of closing down group homes. And we all agree that congregate care is not the best solution for most kids. However, sometimes that is the best and only place for some of these kids that are so very difficult. So with those group homes gone, there were no other options, and the state's suggestion was that, well, we're just going to have specialized foster homes, which is great, but many foster homes don't want to take these really challenging kids. And so we actually must find a solution for them because the alternative is terrible.
Right. No, I understand. So when will we have the estimate for the shelter component or a better, you know, understanding of all the challenges and opportunities around that?
We could probably have that. I know my team has been scheduling calls with other counties to see how they're being staffed. We could probably have that within a month or so. And they may, it may even be sooner because they've been working on it. I have a check-in with my deputy director tomorrow.
Final budget?
Yeah. I was just going to say, sounds like it's perfect time for September, right, for final budget? I mean, assuming that you could cost out and maybe do it conservatively, so what impact it may have on general fund, whether or not we could use realignment for ongoing operational costs. But again, that's, you know, that's in line with so many other elements of our continuum of care that we've been discussing all day and yesterday, that I think we would be remiss if we let it languish to another budget discussion, you know, next year.
I would just, you know, again, add on what you're saying, that there's a growing sense of urgency. And again, I know that my office, certainly I've talked to Michelle on a number of occasions, certainly with Ann, I understand, just as been explained here, the challenges and kind of making the best of a very difficult situation. But there, I think there's growing concern that, not just with some of the activity off-site, but then, you know, folks are placing themselves in greater jeopardy and, you know, it's less than optimal from a lot of different perspectives. We've inherited, but it's ours. We better try to figure this out. So I want to just stress the urgency, and I know that certainly as it relates to just general employee welfare, we could be some concerns about that, about, you know, and I guess there's, you know, some movement off-site to local businesses and congregating there, some tendencies maybe to even then have engagement with types of activities could get them, you know, into the juvenile justice system if not already. And so I just, again, having a safe, secure facility to the points being made by my colleagues here, you understand it far better than probably, you know, me anyway, but I just think there's an urgency to this. And having an office building with folks sleeping on the floor, on cots, having to transport them for bathing and for having meals brought in, and really having no recourse for those that are of a certain age to walk right out the door and then 10 minutes back later come back in and want to be, I mean, it's just not a tolerable situation. And I mean, I'm probably understating it if anything. And so I think to the point, I think maybe having a fuller presentation, recognizing that it's a statewide issue and we're not going to solve that anytime soon, but we got to deal with the folks that are, you know, in our care and our responsibility because they're residents. And I like the idea that supervisor Kennedy brought up, that there may be ability to streamline some of this, you know, because of the crisis relative to their sheltering. I mean, they're, you know, they're, I guess, virtually homeless at some point, but the need to have a higher level of care and security all the way around. So I concur. And then knowing what the ongoing staffing is going to be, because it's going to be a responsibility, I don't, I didn't sense any urgency at the legislature. Did they deal with it the last session when they got billions of dollars to throw around?
Well, they think they solved it with the removal of the group homes and suggesting specialized foster care.
Yeah.
I do believe there's some renewed conversation with CDS around this right now, but it is a concern. And I actually want to clarify the question around budget. So if we know what the budgets are a month from now, the September budget will be all locked up and done. And we don't need operational money until the building is complete. So we'd be happy to share with you what those operational costs should be that we can anticipate, but I don't know that it's appropriate to put it in the September budget because we don't need the money yet.
Well, haven't we used placeholders for out years for different things in the past?
We have.
So that's what I'm thinking. I mean, I mean, look at it through, you know, different, whether it's a budgetary context or service delivery context or personnel staffing context, it should be priority for all those things. And so the theme is, let's not wait.
And what's the plan for the interim? Because even at best, you know, I think Jeff's being honest with us, and maybe you expedite it, maybe you get it done in 18 months, but, or a year. In the interim though, again, I'm going to state the number that I understand, we had 320 calls for service since a year ago May in 2021. Now, that wasn't all for activities necessarily, but just in that general area. And I know that's been shared with you and you've had a long conversation with the police chief and our East Area Commander. So I think, you know, what we're going to do, both internal, external, to help keep those young people safe, but also to, I think, deal with some of the issues that are beginning, because I think the last thing we would want to see is the things really go sideways with the neighborhood out there. Because again, we're looking at a more permanent solution, and I think an elegant one as it relates to modifying a facility that has a lot of the components that would provide for a much safer setting and for counseling and for, you know, housing and such and all the things that would go with any program for, you know, the foster youth that need placement. But I guess, Ann, to your question, I would like to see whatever that component is, and may not have to come back to the board, I don't know, I assume you have authorities, both you and Michelle, if we need to, both internal to the building but external, figure out how we're going to and whether it's additional caseworkers and/or law enforcement, whatever it is, so that we have a plan that bridges between now, because again, I think it's a growing concern and, you know, it's getting a bit elevated. I don't want to overstate it, but a bit elevated. And I would hate to see, while we're trying to do some good things here, something go askance and then we're really going to be in a pickle with some of our neighbors. So is that something doable you could have? Because I know you're in some conversations about building security as well.
I was going to say, we've done some, you want to talk about the enhanced security?
Yeah, so we are working with the sheriffs on getting a contract established to provide onsite security. And we included it in our budget and this board approved. It was not included in the sheriff's budget. So they will need to request the positions in September. However, we're working with the sergeant.
Good luck on that.
We're working with the sergeant over there to see if they can at all bring on some retired annuitants, because you're not overstating the issue and I appreciate the urgency. So we will continue, we've been working with foster parents. We developed a home-based shelter care model where we are paying foster parents, training them up to be able to take some of these young people into placement with a pretty high enhanced rate. We're using some local dollars since cutting the contract with the Children's Receiving Home, we're putting it into these. They often need to take breaks because it is such an intensive placement. And then we're working closely with behavioral health. We're working with our local STRTP providers. As Ann said, we are having elevated conversations with the state. We're on technical assistance calls with them quite frequently. And then the County Welfare Directors Association is also really putting some pressure on the state to help counties find solutions.
Good. Well, thank you. Any other questions? If not, thanks, Michelle.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Annette.
Good evening, Chairman Natoli, members of the board, and CEO Edwards. I'm Annette Bedsworth. I'm the Director for Animal Care. Animal Care looks to provide assistance to the homeless pets owned by the humans experiencing homelessness. Many homeless humans take towards companionship by owning a dog. They're lonely. This is what this can develop is this relationship. It provides them with unconditional love and compassion. So we want to keep pets and people together. Our goal is to support the homeless pets in Sacramento County by providing spay and neuter and vaccination services. And by doing that, we have what's called a Batmobile, which stands for Bradshaw Animal Assist Team. It's a mobile spay and neuter clinic that we want to get out into the community and provide those services. One of our challenges will be to hire a full-time veterinarian. That is definitely a challenge and not just for us but for others because there is a national shortage of veterinarians. So the recruitment should be up and posted hopefully by this week. And we're also going to hire registered veterinary technicians, and the recruitment is ongoing. It's already been posted for that because we do want to get out into the communities with people who own dogs. I personally went out there a week and a half ago to the camps and talked to our potential clients, and they're very receptive to get the dogs spayed and neutered because that was a big concern, if they were willing to accept services, and they are. And it's so needed. One of the persons came up to me and showed me her dog, and the dog's already had four litters and will probably have five before we can get back out there into the community. But we do want to assist and provide services to the homeless communities, and we look forward to contributing to this effort. Is there any questions I can provide?
Thanks, Annette. I know that in one of our hearings not too long ago, I asked about a position that actually was funded some years ago that would assist an animal officer. I don't know what the particular position was, but it was basically not just for enforcement, but also for, I think, again, situations where if there's a need for spay and neuter, we have other programs. I mean, that may be only one situation where you don't have to wait till the fifth litter. You certainly could have that animal taken into care and custody and have that surgery performed and get it back. I think the Batmobile getting out into those areas is really important, but is that a position still identified within your departmental budget so that you actually have, again, you know, you're going to have a veterinarian that was already explained and I think in the recommended budget?
A veterinarian, yes.
Yeah, but what about an animal officer that would assist, I think, with some of the outreach, contacts, you know, and obviously the idea here is to be supportive, but.
My understanding is that position was lost, I believe, in the budget year 2018, 19, or it could be 17, 18. When El Grove came on board, the department lost that revenue source, so that position was deleted out of the animal control budget.
However, I do want to add that our homeless encampment teams are out speaking with our unhoused residents and know who has pets. And I think that the combination of animal care, working with the encampment team, that we will be able to provide sufficient outreach.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'll just say that, thank you for sharing that. Five years after the fact, that's the first time I've heard that, Annette. I mean, you know, that was never shared by Ann's predecessors or your predecessor that that's what happened. I know about the lost revenues, but that position was explicitly put in when we did the Neighborhood and Parkway Initiative by Board Action and funded, you know, maybe somebody could show me the trail within the budget framework that that got eliminated the following year, but thanks for sharing that. But I think, you know, this is a good idea. I would just note, and they're signed to speak, but Claudia Cardoza-Aterhal certainly has been an advocate for some of the animals, and you may have met her, but if not, she's in the audience today and might be a good chance to connect because I know she's been one of the advocates for doing some of what you've.
I actually went out into the homeless camps with Claudia.
You did, okay. So you're already, you're already become best friends. Good.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair Natoli and members of the board. Jania Monastario, I'm Director for the Environmental Management Department. I'm going to be presenting for the 2023 Retail Food Permit Fee Waiver Project Proposal. This recommendation would waive the annual operating fee, permit fee for most retail food businesses in Sacramento County. The project would continue the current ARPA-funded 2022 Retail Food Permit Fee Waiver Project, which was approved earlier this year in January. The retail food business sector was disproportionately impacted by COVID-19 due to state and local public health orders and mandates. public health orders and mandates. These businesses continue to struggle with labor shortages, food supply disruptions, and increased operating costs. The issuance of environmental health operating permits is critical to safeguarding public health and food safety. This project, if approved, would begin in January 2023 and would last for one year. The project's recommended funding of $6.8 million would aid approximately 7,397 businesses throughout Sacramento County. Eligible retail food businesses would be those with accounts in good standing, and would include the same businesses in the current 2022 Retail Food Waiver Project. This would include retail markets up to 15,000 square feet, food banks, caterers, cottage food operations, snack bars, school cafeterias, farmers' markets, mobile food facilities, bars, swap meet vendors, and restaurants. The project so far has been tremendously successful in providing retail food businesses with economic relief and assisting in their recovery. By approving this project, the county would provide much-needed economic aid to small businesses, which in turn would contribute to the improvement of the financial health of communities and to the county as a whole. Thank you.
Janie, I have just, Sue, go ahead, follow my question.
Just wanted to ask, would all businesses qualify for the permit fee waiver, or would it just be businesses who were active as of March 19, 2020? I know one of my constituents lost his business, and then he pulled his money together and started another, and he didn't qualify for the Economic Development Grant, and so he was disappointed. Would he qualify for that?
For this one, yes, he would. And so this one would be all eligible businesses that are in operation as of December 31st, 2022. So any businesses in operation as of the end of this year would qualify for the waiver moving into 2023. So all those businesses in operation for the first round in 2022 would be eligible, and then again, for 2020, if they become in operation in '22, would then be eligible for 2023. So it would be pulling those businesses in.
Thank you.
So I just follow-up question, Janine. So what's been the dropout rate, though? Because we saw a lot of those businesses go under in 2020 and 2021. How many of those establishments that were there even for the first or even for the second round, maybe don't know exactly, but are gone? You know, I saw percentages where you saw 30% and 40% wash out. I don't know that it was that heavy in this community, but.
Excellent question. In 2020, we saw about 500 businesses go out of business, and we've seen them come back. Where the inventory were at 7,000, for the eligible businesses would be 7,397. Our full inventory is about 7,500. That includes the ones that wouldn't be eligible. That's the retail markets, the large retail markets. So we are seeing businesses coming back in to business. However, it's not fully back to our normal inventory pre-pandemic.
So you're going to tie this back to, you know, if you were in business December 31st, but what if you're a new business coming in? Because that's what you're talking about, the replacements, and some of those will now meet that requirement. But if, you know, a lot of the mom and pops that are coming in, that maybe there was a vacant storefront, they're going to try their hand at a restaurant or some sort of food outlet. They're not eligible for any buy-down. They pay all the full freight. So they come in January 1st, they're not eligible, one, for any going back, but secondly, then going forward, you know, you're going to require them to pay the full freight. And it seems to me if we're trying to work our way out of a situation here and encourage folks that maybe that could be, maybe it's not a full buy-down, but maybe there's some incentive, folks come in, it might be a pleasant surprise, rather than paying whatever thousands of dollars it is for all the permits that, you know, in order to help you get a bit of a boost or lift, you're going to do X, so.
So just from understanding, do you mean for businesses that would come in operation in 2023 while this program's in effect?
Yes.
That would be something that we could discuss. We did have to give an end date or a beginning date, because it's a set amount, and it's based on our inventory. So if we were looking at increasing that into 2023, we would just need to have those additional funds. But I think, I mean, it's something we could do.
Yeah.
Well, it would require additional funds.
Additional money?
Yes.
I guess the one thing I was looking at, because is that if you had 500 businesses that were gone, that were here in 2019 or '20 that were gone, now you have some displacement, so, and they're going to qualify for this program, but continues to be some fallout. And so those folks are not eligible, and there's a replacement coming into the overall package or bundle of businesses. And I don't know how you account for that. Again, I get that, you know, if this was a static number, but it's not a static number. I mean, it sounds like it's grown, but it hasn't grown back to the point where you were pre-COVID, if I understood you correctly, Janie.
Yeah, and that's an excellent question. So the $6,841 does, is not our full inventory. So if I were to take all of our permits, add them up, it would exceed this amount. So we already are taking into account that there will be some turnover, and any of the turnover from 2022, we'll be able to use some of those funds to replace that. So there's a possibility we could have some extra, but it's pretty close right now. So we would need some additional funds if we would like to continue providing funding into 2023 for those new businesses.
Okay. I appreciate your response. Just one other question. So how do people know that they're getting, I mean, they know they're getting a break, but I can tell you, in my travels, I've never had a restaurateur that said to me, "Thank you, County." Not that I would expect it, but "Thank you, County, for, you know, waiving my, you know, fees last year." I mean, we did it, and we did it for all establishments, whether they were in the city or county, and I'm not that frequently talking to a restaurateur. But I've never had, you know, and I don't impose a question, I'm not presuming, but because that was on their schedule, but so when you go out there, are you telling them that because of the economic development response by this county, whether you're in the city or county areas, that you're getting this break?
Yes. So we do have a dedicated webpage for all of this information. We're providing it on our invoice. So when the invoice goes out to the business, they'll see on there what this economic response is. We're doing outreach, sending out emails to our email blast. All of our staff is aware of it, and they're also having those conversations with businesses during their inspections.
I guess they ought to know, is there all of our tax dollars that, you know, are flowing down this county that are helping them with this economic recovery? And again, you know, I trust that they're grateful, but it's just that, you know, we put $7 million into this last go-round, and another $7 million contemplated, so all total is probably $15 million, and it's helped. But I can't say that I've received an acknowledgement from anyone, so.
And that's unfortunate, because I think the department, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jania, but I think the department has received a ton of thank yous. Restaurants have.
Maybe you could share some of those with us, just so we know. I mean, again, I'm glad they're directed to you. You're the ones that are administering, but it would be kind of nice to know, because, you know, you trust the impacts there, and that's good to know. So maybe you could take us a handful of the kudos and.
Yeah, we can, we will definitely share that with all of you, that we have received tremendous amount of appreciation and good words from businesses. And in fact, Burke had attended a meeting and brought it up with the chambers, and they actually applauded and said, "This is great for the community." So we have been receiving really good words back from it, that it's been a popular and a very successful program. But we will share that with you.
Sue Bedsworth Ross.
I just wanted to follow up with that small number of businesses that actually lost their business and regrouped and figured out how to get started again and started a new business under a different name or a different business. Is there anything prohibiting us from doing something for them? Seems like they fell through the cracks, and they had the worst, they got hit the hardest.
Right. So if they came back online, and they come in in 2022, they would be eligible for the 2023. And depending on the nuance, there's lots of different types of situations. We've been working with the businesses for that reason. And so if we're, if, you know, we're able to do some juggling around of the permit fees and payment of that, if there's, say, a business was forced to close, or they were closed for a while, they were temporarily closed, and then came back online and were able to open up again, then we could work with them, move their anniversary date, or be able to do something so that they wouldn't be penalized, and they could take advantage of these funds. Our goal is for all, as many businesses as we can, to bring them into this waiver and have the ability to utilize it.
And you're talking about permit fee waivers, and I'm wondering about the grant, the Economic Development Grant.
I'm going to be talking in just a moment about the direct community investment item up there, and that might fit in there.
Okay, great. I'll yield.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts or comments along these lines? Okay. Thanks, Janie.
Thank you.
Okay. So we are proposing to set aside $5 million for direct community investments. We have not fully developed this program yet. It has not been assigned to a particular department, which is why you have me standing here in front of you. So we'll be developing that program, and we're envisioning it as really direct support to the community, to CBOs, to businesses, and there'll be, we're envisioning some sort of an application process. We haven't, as I said, fully fleshed it out, but we'll be coming back to you with details on that. So, and really, anyone particularly underserved communities, underserved individuals that were impacted by the pandemic, this could support them. This could also be a place where the organizations supporting BIPOC communities could apply for funds, so it's fairly broad.
Okay. Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that's good to hear. I assume that this will not, it will not make any difference whether, let's say it's a CBO that applies through some kind of grant application process, is doing their good work in an incorporated area or an unincorporated area?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to follow on, I know that she was here earlier, maybe still, we're still in the building, but we had the group that was here, you know, a few weeks back, and talking about, you know, direct investment, you know, assistance to communities and so forth. Again, you haven't fully developed this idea, but this, some of the things that they were referencing, assuming that there was, you know, the structure in place to receive the monies and properly utilize them, they could be qualifying for some of these dollars? Is that?
I would think so, yes.
Okay. Has there been outreach through any of your staff?
Yeah, through my staff, they're.
She wrote a letter to all of us. I didn't get a chance to talk.
Talking about April.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that was, she was in the.
Yeah, she was here earlier. Yeah, she signed up.
Yeah, we've had, since I kind of offered the $2 million to try and get them started towards their goal, that precipitated a great deal of discussion between she and my chief and me and Ann and Amanda and others. What I understand the issue with that group, and I think it was the, under the guise of the Unitarian Church, if I'm not mistaken.
It was.
Is that, once it became clear to the group that there are some very specific accounting measures that have to be in place and responsibilities that have to be assumed, in large part per the Treasury guidance, many of the groups that they think they were going to, that they were advocating for, that was kind of a game changer. So at least that's my current understanding. I don't know if, Ann, that's your understanding, but it doesn't mean it can't be done, but that's, for instance, what is driving my office to look more at augmenting what has already been committed through the Sierra Health Foundation that I think meets the same need, so.
Okay.
And I'll be meeting with April next week to discuss that further, and then we'll roll into other recommendations for homelessness.
Thanks. Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janie. Okay. Smiling all the way down.
Good evening, Chair Natoli and members of the board.
Those pavement machines going out there, Mr. Vicari.
Excuse me. Ron Vicari, Director of Transportation. I will not go through my 20-point pavement slides, because I know you guys probably have them memorized by now. But I do want to talk about kind of the significance of where we are real quickly in pavements. With the $22.5 million from '21-'22 that was allocated of general fund by the board, and then, of course, this year's $20 million additional money from the general fund, as well as what's being recommended here with $20 million towards pavements, it is having, it is going to have a significant impact on one of the highest priorities and biggest needs we have in the county. With that money, we will be able to improve the overall pavement condition of our roads. We'll be able to actually reduce the maintenance backlog that we have. We'll be able to reverse the downward trend of the PCI curve and also avoid some really expensive reconstructions. These are things that the county has never talked about in my career of 20 years here. So it's, as you know, we're $50 million to maintain status quo. If this is approved, we will be in excess of $60 million this year. It is really significant and getting really close to our goal of trying over 20 years to get to a 70 PCI. With the ARPA funds, we are proposing to address low-to-moderate income neighborhoods, those disadvantaged and underserved neighborhoods. So we will be looking at things like the Environmental Justice Map as part of our general plan, as well as the Low to Moderate Income Maps from SHRA, and really trying to target those neighborhoods that have been underserved. Just to lay out quickly the expectation, we do plan, we're taking what our pavement management system recommendations are, we're overlaying them with those maps and others that I just mentioned, to come to you, each of you, of the supervisors, with recommendations in the first and second week of August, to lay those expectations out. If anything happens to fall into something that could be force account work, it could possibly be done by the end of the summer, but the majority of the work that we're talking about here today will be designed over the winter, put out to bed, and will be part of that group of, which I mentioned, in excess of $60 million worth of overlays that will go out, that will start building generally in the April to May timeframe, spring starting in that timeframe. So with that, I just want to express my appreciation for this consideration. It's been something we've been driving for. And I should also say that this also allows us to not only improve our pavements, but buys us additional time to keep working on trying to figure out how we can bring more pavements into fix-it-first through regional funding. And I just, again, I want to express my thanks for this consideration, and I'm open to any questions.
Any questions? Just one question I have is that, you know, the significant infusion of general fund dollars in some of these things do require matches. You've been able to match, obviously, you know, mix and match state and federal dollars and so forth. Are we in any way in a better position beyond what you just stated? Again, you've got $20 million of general fund, and then what's being recommended here, which are federal dollars that have their own constraints, but has that improved our position in qualifying and going, showing to SECOG or to anybody else that would listen to us? You know, we're putting, these are not gas tax dollars, these are not sales tax dollars. They may get mingled relative to sales tax and some of the county revenues, but these are general fund dollars that are coming in here. Does that help us in any respect? Because again, I guess I haven't seen that. I know you're very competitive, and you do good work, but, and I just, the last piece I was going to say is that we continue to struggle in the rural parts of this county, because with the lane miles, but the low population numbers, and such a deteriorated condition, and I still haven't seen, as much as I harp on that and have continued to for probably a better part of 10 years, I really haven't seen, except for what we do with the district allocations, which just gobbles up the money like there's no tomorrow. So where are we with what we're putting together, is this board in a, you know, in our decision-making saying, you know, "We're in. We're in big." But how's, not just we're getting in our competitive, which are always competitive, whether we put money in or not. Are we seeing any progress, Ron?
Absolutely. It is, it's probably been the most significant change we've had, as early as this morning with, and I had meetings and negotiations and talks about the LPP funding with the SDA PAC.
What's that? You're using all the acronyms.
Yeah, we're sorry, with the Local Partnership Program Funding. And talking, but it's also in us looking at and working with SECOG to try to look at programs that could kind of serve the purpose of all of us in the region. And so as we start to propose those things like rural roads, and also having SECOG take on a regional program, and we're just starting this process, such as, you know, serving disadvantaged neighborhoods and communities, and those things that we think we can get support for, as we're starting to talk to regional partners, they are all taking notice of the fact that the county is putting in significant amounts of general fund. I don't know any other jurisdiction that has made this focused of an effort and really, and really showed it to be such a high priority. So as we've, over the years, as we've continued to say what a priority this is, as we've continued to say, to talk about, they've seen the same slides you have about the significance of this issue. I don't think it's ever got so much traction, you know, just. You know, just even today, I think, you know, Rancho Cordova, City of Sacramento, everyone has asked and talked about the significance of us receiving general fund contributions. And so, it's definitely being noticed in our region, it's definitely helping us, to back us up on how much of a priority it is to us.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ron. I'm certainly very excited about this, and it seems to me, since this is revenue replacement, we're not restricted in terms of this being able to be used to, as a match for other grants, is that right?
It cannot be used for federal, matching federal dollars, because it is federal money.
Okay, got it, okay. And I like the fact that it's specifically tied to roads and disadvantaged communities. I would think that would, that in and of itself would open up a lot more opportunities, because it dovetails so much with the priorities of SECOG and other organizations I hope we could work with to maximize this, these resources that we're dedicating here. And when you come back and talk, when did you say you're gonna come back and set up meetings to talk with us about-
Yeah, we plan in the first two weeks of August. So we're getting on this immediately. We want to have this big impact starting as early as we can in the spring, so we'll be in there, it'll take us a couple of weeks to put it together, and we'll be in front of you with recommendations.
And then, what will be the criteria to identify the disadvantaged communities that would be eligible for this?
So we'll be looking at what, kind of what, basically, the, you know, general fund designation for EJ communities, environmental justice communities, also looking at low to moderate income disadvantaged designations as part of the federal process through SHRA. They've been able to identify those neighborhoods, just making sure, bless you, and just making sure that we target those, and make sure that we focus this money on underserved communities.
Great. I really look forward to the discussion and appreciate you proposing this.
Okay, very good. No other questions? Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Liz Bellis.
Parade of agencies. The parade of agencies.
Yeah, parade of agencies. This looks like a bike trail in the picture, it doesn't look like a road.
It does look like a bike trail, you are correct. Good evening.
Pretty good pavement, though.
It does look like nice pavement. Good evening, Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks, and we have identified three different park road projects that we would recommend with this funding, should it be approved. They are areas that have a minimum of moderate to high vulnerability in the CDC SVI index. So that is El Manto, Gibson Ranch, and Riverbend. And so that is what we would be focusing on. We have many other park roads that are in need, but we are very grateful for the opportunity to start tackling our problem.
Question?
Yeah, sure.
So, I'm sure the Deloitte folks have counseled us on this, but are roads within the park system the only element of our regional park capital improvements that could be funded with ARPA funds?
What about bathrooms?
I'm gonna look to either Amanda or Matt, who's in chambers. I don't think roads at all can be used for regular ARPA funding, but I'm not-
What's that?
This is a revenue replacement, so it's not-
This is the revenue replacement?
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay.
Never mind.
Thank you.
I wasn't paying attention to the header of the slide.
But I did want to ask, what about, again, the restroom facilities, again, but I'm gonna ask about that, because we've got, you know, we went through a program 15 years ago and did major infusion of dollars, you know, a lot of those have worn out in place or been vandalized, or just, you know, are in need.
That is correct. So we have, because of the generosity of the board with general fund dollars and the sale of Elkhaw Regional Park, we have identified a lot of restroom projects that will be funded in this next year. And so, but as you are well aware, my unfunded CIP list is significant.
But again, sanitation goes to potable water in restroom facilities, obviously a lot of other things on that CIP list, but, so you're gonna get some of those done through other funding?
Correct.
And do all the, how about all the water fountains?
We have identified several of those for some work related to ADA projects.
Okay.
Not all, but we are, we have identified some.
Could you send the list of ones you got scheduled for repair?
I can, I can provide that, I don't have it-
No, no, just say, could you send all this?
Yes, I can, yes.
All right. Any other questions on parks?
Thank you.
All right, Liz, thanks. Okay, Mr. Gasaway.
Jeff Gasaway, Director of General Services. As you're all aware, we're currently in the process of developing a master plan for Mather Community Campus, and this funding would help the, any projects that would come out of that master plan. We are lagging behind on the master plan by approximately two months, because we were trying to put, my partner, Departments and I, were trying to put together the correct staff to answer a lot of the questions that were being asked of the master plan, as well as working with Nextmove, VOA, and those other service providers out there to get their input as well. So, we are running a little behind, but we should be back to the board.
Before I leave?
Yeah, definitely before you leave, yes.
Well, I say that half jokingly, but I mean, seriously, again, as we're looking at capacity improvements, one-time ARPA dollars, and again, obviously, this board isn't, you know, gonna follow through as they see fit, but it's of great interest, again, something we've been talking about for some time, and you promised in August, and now if I hear two months, that takes us into October, potentially, hopefully. But, again, and we've set money aside, so are we gonna have a conversation then about, not only repairs and upgrades, but I think there's a real need to focus in on some capacity, you know, out there. And that's, you know, again, to discussions we've had about trying to cite and make our continuum of care, again, I see some real opportunities, it won't happen overnight, but I would certainly like to, very much like to be a part of that conversation, Jeff, and I've said this to Anne-
It will. We actually had a meeting, it was last Friday, on where we were to get, to give the Kitchels some direction on some potential plans that they had put together for different types of additions or remodels. So, yes, it will include additions, remodels, and potentially upgrades and things like that, yes.
Let me, Anne, I wanted to ask you, so it's gonna be after final budget, you know, we're now building these funds, revenue replacement in, but if there were, again, I guess I was anticipating that we had some discussion about a master plan, and that will be one last time to have that conversation within the context of the budget, if there were other dollars that either I or others were looking at, saying we want to do this, we could make that decision, but this workshop will come post-final budget, so, and it goes to that realm of when we can make decisions, as majority of the board versus any other time during the year, which require appropriation adjustments, and in the full context. And so, again, that's, from my view, is very important. It doesn't sound like there's any way you're gonna have this ready by the second week of September, or first week of September. I'm a little disappointed, I'll just say that, because what it does, it gets us out of sync as it relates to budget discussions that could be, and again, I'm prepared, under the district-guided monies, to advance monies, I've already said this, for Mather Veterans Village, and also, whereas, interesting, because I haven't, you know, even given guidance to all that money, if we were gonna do a project out of Mather on the campus that would help improve family housing, do some additional capacity for our transitional age youth, again, I'm willing to do that, but if I don't know that-
So, I think there's opportunity, because I think what you're talking about is expansion and additional units, and there's, you know, homeless and housing ARPA money that we have not, you know, projected yet, and, and again, I want to be clear that we would likely recommend shelter or transitional housing for singles, because that is the greatest need that we have. I know that the city of Rancho Cordova is expanding Mather Veterans Village.
Maybe some family, I'd like to look at that.
And maybe, we have another plan underway that I'm pretty excited about, that, you know, we're not ready to bring forward yet around family housing, but there will be potential opportunity with ARPA.
But, we can't really, doesn't need money until we've had this plan presented to us, and I don't know where that's gonna put us in the ARPA process, because you're already working on ways in other projects that will take that money. And so, again, I think the idea was to try to dovetail this with reasonable expectations about the timing, so we could have that before the money gets allocated and certainly appropriated, that comes after, but, and I'm just concerned-
Timing is definitely challenging.
Because we're gonna, we're gonna miss, we're gonna miss some of those-
I think the timeframe to make all the repairs at Mather is going to be significant, and-
I get that. I'm okay with that.
And I know, but I think that work needs to be completed, and Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, before we see the footprint of the campus and what that looks like, and if in fact, because I think you're talking about expansion only on-
Campus.
The campus, and-
When I say expansion, it may be adding some, you know, either within the confines, those buildings are hard to work within, but you might have some additional modular units or something that would be complementary to the campus, but gives additional family housing and/or-
Modular, yeah. Modular units probably would be the only economically feasible way to go, and what I don't know is where on the campus it would make sense to put, make sense to put modular units.
Well, that's what I thought we were looking at, in addition to the needs to repair the buildings. But the transitional age youth, you've got foster youth, we talked about that earlier today, you know, that housing is in, you know, in need of some repair, but there might be some opportunities to add, you gotta have the program to support the services, I get that, but there might be some, right across the street, some opportunity. Again, not that you won't keep your, looking at those things post-my term of service, but I certainly would like to be engaged, because again, I think communicating with the city, I have some rapport there, as do you, but also, as we're looking at the funding, you know, and this funding, a lot of this is one time, when it's allocated, it's gone. So what's the soonest you think you could have it back to the board? I'm gonna put you on the spot over here, Jeff.
I've been twisting the arm of my staff and the consultant, and I'm hoping early October, late October.
Getting close.
Yeah.
I'll twist harder, see what I can come up with.
Tell me who you're talking with, I can twist it too, although you're a little bit below me, but it just fell in the chain of command, but, again, I just think it's important for a lot of reasons, not just about my presence, I just, again, I have a real interest in this, and I'm very committed, and as we've talked about, our homeless solution sets in trying to provide more housing and shelter, the campus has tremendous amount of potential, and it will have well into the future. I just, I, you know, I would very much like to be a part of those conversations, and if I'm not, I guess I'm not, so.
I would also like to add that, you know, we are in a much better place with Mather Community Campus than we were a year ago or two years ago, with the additional funding for my staff to go out and maintain the Mather Community Campus.
Thank you for your work on the vision.
We've been working over the last couple of months in anticipation of that, and making sure that we get all the equipment added, we're working with Nextmove and the service providers out there, DHA, DHS, to be able to come up with clear guidelines on who does what, and I think we're in a great place right now with the existing facilities, so.
And thank you for that. Now, again, you know, you and I've talked about specific issues related to that, and I'm very appreciative, as are the residents, I'm sure.
Yes.
When it was 100 degrees and the energy actually works, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I had. Anybody else on ether? All right. Okay.
To close it out today, the next steps are, we will continue to roll out Phase II projects, return to the board with additional project recommendations, specifically for the housing and homelessness category. We will be providing regular reports to you. When we submit a federal report, we will also bring a report to you, so, and then we also have a website that will provide information on our ARPA, ARPA, excuse me, efforts, including quarterly and annual reports to the U.S. Treasury, so you'll be hearing a lot more from us in the coming months.
Okay, great. Thanks, Anne. Any other questions for Anne or any of the staff that's here? All right, and then, this is an action item, we need to see public testimony, I know we have a couple of folks in the audience that have been here all afternoon, and others that may have had to leave, and then, do we have folks on the phone, too? We do, okay. All right, let's go to our folks in the audience, so I have Dan Aderhold, followed by Claudia Cardoza-Aderhold, John Effekner, and April Jean, and I think some of the folks may have had to leave, so apologies. Yeah. Oh, did, okay, John had to leave, okay, thanks, Dan.
Okay, hello again, you guys. There's some things in here I noticed that's not very realistic. For one, the $400,000 for the spay and neuter, and thing, I think it's grossly underestimated, because right now, on America River Parkway alone, we have explosions of animals being born, and spay and neuter, and they need more vets than just one vet. I'm hoping that county could get at least two or three vets there, because, one, you're gonna work that man to the death. I mean, because, I mean, this alone on America River Parkway, right here, on Ridge of Boulevard, there's 93 puppies right now. That's not counting 193 females that are on the parkway right now. By the time, I just got to meet this lady here, and she came down to meet us, and we hung out for a day, she got to meet three people there, and she told me herself that she has no vet right now, that she's hiring, and she needs to get a vet and everything, and the Batmobile's not gonna be off for a while, which is a good thing, and that bill, being, I hope it could be soon, sooner than later. But anyways, what I'm getting at, though, me and my wife here, we're the closest thing to a vet on America River Parkway that homeless have. We have, right now, me and my wife have saved in the last three months 36 animals, and seven animals this month, okay? This month's not over. We have saved these animals, and we wanted to see how fast Bradshaw could help with the homeless dog. She did her best, she called Front Street, okay? Front Street majorly dropped the ball. The dog suffered for two days before it actually got help after, they kept telling them, oh, we're coming, oh, we're coming, oh, we're coming. They told us that all day after, she called them, and that called them, and the dog suffered with a gash on his leg arm and everything else for two days, because they kept telling us they're coming, so we thought their dog was being treated already, right? We came back the next day, dog wasn't even treated. I called her right away, got a hold of her, said, hey, look, man, they haven't came. So Net jumped on the ball and got on the ball, and got them to come. Finally, they came, the next day, way later in the afternoon, they come and helped the dog. The point is, the dog suffered needlessly when it needly suffering as cruel as human, and they're supposed to be there to help animals, not say, well, we can't come right now, just let the dog suffer overnight, because it's not bleeding all the way out. That was what they told her. But bottom line is, you guys, what I'm getting at, county is the solution. I'm sorry, but Front Street, anyways. Bradshaw, Bradshaw needs to be on America River Parkway, not Front Street. Bradshaw County needs to be there with the Batmobile, and hopefully, we all can work together, my, my homes crew, because right now, we're out here helping 193 pets a week out here with animal food. You know who actually stepped up and helped us? SBCA and Bradshaw. They're the only ones that helped us. Every time I ask Front Street for help, oh, we can give you doggy blankets. What the hell is doggy blankets gonna do for, excuse the language, for the homeless that are starving? And dead animal collars, okay? Anyways, that's gross. But what I'm getting at, though, is, right now, I definitely would like to see if they have more than one Batmobile, if you guys could fund in that. And the other thing I want to talk about really quick is park and rec. Park and rec, that $5 million to me is a joke, they need at least $7 million to $8 million, because the roadway on the parkway, and Discovery Park is the most beautiful park here in Sacramento, I'm sorry, I'm going over a few seconds here, but it's the most beautiful park in the parkway, right? I wouldn't trust my worst enemy to drink the fountain water out of that damn park, okay? The water's disgusting. The water literally smokes when you have it out there on the thing. Put your hat right here, put the water in your hat, watch your hat smoke. That's what you're drinking, okay? That is not good, okay? And the bathrooms on the parkway-
Why does the hat smoke if you put the water in it? What's the chemical reaction there?
I have no idea.
I don't either, I wouldn't-
I would not, I would not give it to my dog.
Liz, you better get that checked.
I would not give it to my dog, I'm gonna give it to my worst enemy. And I'm not, I'm nearly, I'm not kidding, I literally showed the rain, I took my hat off, they showed it on a cold day, it wasn't hot, and put the water in my hat, and the rain was even, they're like, what the heck? You know? They said they don't know what to do about that, they said it was a maintenance job. Oh, yeah, yeah, video right here, you guys, my hat's smoking. Can you guys push that right here?
Well, let's see, let's run the video.
Show the water going in my hat, and my hat starts smoking, you guys.
Oh.
Oh, my.
You guys wanna drink that?
Nope, neither do you, so, okay.
Watch the smoke, you guys, come out of my hat, and this was not even a hot day. Oh, it was right after I met Net, actually. I mean, Liz, sorry, Liz Bellis.
Oh, Anne, you were-
At the park that day.
You were steaming along, I don't know what's going on there.
Look, you guys, look at the smoke, look at the water coming-
That is weird.
Drink that? The water is white.
Okay, okay.
I mean, what is that?
I don't know. Okay, we'll get it, Liz will get it checked out, so.
Well, I'm getting that, well, I'm getting that. Park and Rec, you guys are grossly underestimating Park Rec's money. Discovery Park is the most beautiful park here, we need to keep it beautiful, we need those bathrooms opened, we need the trash cans along the parkway. Well, Sarah, you and me talked about this for years, buddy, we need to get trash cans on the parkway. Don, you too, Sue Frost, all of you guys, Candy, I'm not leaving you out. You know, we all talked about this, you know?
You're gonna get your smoking hat on there, Candy.
Desmond, you're new here, but hey, man, we all talked about this, about the trash cans along the parkway, it's critical, we get that there. It's critical that Park, Park right here, Park and Rec, gets the money they need to get the fix Discovery Park in the roads, because this is critical, you guys, this can't wait till later, this needs to be done now. This is a lawsuit waiting to happen, this might get down injured from our ill.
Dan, thank you, thank you for waiting around and addressing us. I just want you, I want to make sure you understand, and it goes back to some line of questioning, there's a lot of restriction on this particular, on these particular funds in terms of being able to fund the things that you want us to fund. That was why I was kinda asking the questions I was, and Supervisor Nattoli was asking the same thing about bathrooms. Doesn't mean that we can't do it, it's just a different discussion for a different day, and that day is next gonna be in September when we're addressing the final budget, so I'd encourage you to come back at that point, I think you're probably already coming back if I had to guess.
It's been most Tuesdays and Wednesdays, by the way, Stan.
Yeah, but during our final budget discussions, that's when we can really have an honest discussion and engage with advocates for park improvements. It's around our general fund, not this particular pot of federal funds. So if that makes, I hope you understand, we're not, we're not, we're not in disagreement, it's just that this is not the appropriate funding source to fund the things that you want right now.
Okay, I understand. Also, this one I asked, one other thing, is there any way we could get dog food for the homeless on the parkway as well, for the animals out there? Because right now, I'm asking the county to help you guys, Phil Serna, ask you guys help right now, because everybody, Bradshaw only can do so much, okay? Front Street, well, anyways, you know, everybody's trying to do the best, I'm not trying to put down nobody, don't get me wrong, but you know, SBCA's helping us with dog food, but they only can do so much, everybody's short on dog food right now, and the animals out there are starving right now. Is there any way the county could help with dog food as well?
Sounds like we're doing some, I'll have some conversation with Annette offline here and see if there's, you know, it may not be this source of money, and I know they are able to assist in some regards, I don't know if they're able to sustain that, so let us, let me, let us follow up on that, Dan, okay?
Okay, take it, Don.
Good, thank you very much. Thank you for your advocacy. Okay. All right, Claudia, you're next, and then I don't know that April Jean, I think she may have left.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, and thank you to all of you for, you know, listening to the concerns of we have, and letting us be the link between community and government. I also want to thank, you know, Annette for actually coming out on a field trip with us last week, also Celeste, which is her volunteer coordinator, and Vida, which is her administrator, and I want to thank also Deputy, I mean, David Villanueva, okay, which is the Deputy County Executive, for making this connection possible and your suggestion and everything. It really makes a difference for us to have the opportunity to show you what our day is like, what we see every day, and I would like to show you some pictures, since a picture has, you know, speaks a thousand words and-
You showed us the smoking hat, so let's see what else you got. So tell us what you got there.
Yes. In our daily day, as animal advocates, we receive phone calls about homeless trying to get rid of their animals, or we try to encourage them to go ahead and have the animals go to either a shelter or find a home. So we do receive, we ended up fostering, sorry, we end up fostering for a lot of the homeless, we ended up getting phone calls at every time to go and pick up puppies or families, animals. As you can see, we also receive, animals are injured, so we go out, we don't have a schedule, we don't have weekends, and we don't work a nine-to-five job. So if we get a call at midnight because an animal was run over, we go out there. This animal, for example, she was, sorry, very bad, and I had to drain the wound four days before I could get him into the vet. We cover all the medical expenses ourselves.
Thank you.
So also, what we do, that's another one, as you can see, that's raw skin infection, that animal had three different infections going on. This and parasites. So that's what we face every day, these are the conditions of the homeless animals in a daily basis. And I understand that a lot of, you know, people that are working behind a desk or working behind, putting together projects, don't get to see this firsthand. This is what we see every day. So when I'm here advocating for the animals is because I do see their suffering firsthand. Now, these animals and the homeless, their companions have been affected by the COVID-19, you know, pandemic, because a lot of the services that they could have had, they just stopped. There's no spay and neuter that is free for the homeless, and it won't be until the Batmobile gets in place, which could be another couple of years. So the day that Annette came out to the field, and I'm sorry if I'm running out of, you know, over the time, we had nine puppies that I had talked to her on a Sunday about it. We couldn't get the transport on a Sunday to Bradshaw, which is in Rancho, which is a whole hour round trip for us. There's no transportation. We provide the transportation, we provide medical first aid, we provide, you know, food, we do it all. 24 hours, seven days a week, and it's just a husband and wife team. So I appreciate your help, I appreciate your listening ears, because we wish we could do more, we cannot do it without your help, though. So that's, that's all I wanted to do.
Well, thank you, Claudia, and to both you and Dan, appreciate your efforts, and we'll continue to work to what we do and hopefully together make a difference in certainly the people that are out there, but also the lives of the animals, too, so. Good, thanks so much. All right, that is April Jean, I think April Jean left, I know she was here earlier, so that's the only ones I had in chamber, so go to the phone.
Okay, please transfer the caller. You have about two or three callers, I'm not sure if someone dropped off. Hi, caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Oh, okay, hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. Just a couple of comments, you know, when I was reviewing the report, it said for Phase One, there's some stats regarding how much of the Phase One allocation was spent already, and there's $25 million for the district-directed allocation, and it looks like that $25 million was not used, or there's nothing from that chart that shows that $25 million has been used yet, so I'm curious, why is that? And then, the same $25 million is also being allocated for Phase Two. So, and what does, what does it mean, district-directed allocation? There's no information speaking to what that allocation stock is addressing. Number two is the survey that I think the, I forgot the general lady's name, she mentioned that she used the survey to disperse this allocation. How long was this survey? Was this a survey that was taken two years ago, a year ago? I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, my name is Justin. If the survey was outdated, can a revised survey maybe be used to allocate the new funding? And that's a segue to the homelessness, because as you guys know, with the point in time count, the homelessness numbers has increased, and I don't know if the survey that was taken six months ago or two years ago captures the new homeless numbers. And I just want to also say, I was calling regarding homelessness, and I appreciate adding more beds, and especially for psychs and substance abuse, because that's where a lot of the homeless issues is, so I applaud the county for doing that. And then I want to make a couple of other points, this, does the county collaborate with the cities regarding this allocation? Do the cities provide feedback? Do the cities get some fundings? Maybe for best practices, the cities and the county cooperate together in terms of, you know, reducing homelessness? I know the county is responsible for more of the social service aspect, but you know, I know with Sacramento City, they deal with a lot of homeless issues. And lastly, is it possible to use some of the road services, resources, to resurface Watt Avenue from Fair Oaks to Arton Way? It's just really bad and it's a very heavy traffic area. I know that Mr. Serna was saying that the funding for this is strictly allocated for certain type of communities, maybe the money that those communities will be getting in the budget that's coming up, redirecting it for this money and that saving could be used. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank you for opportunity, and I just wanted to say, point of privilege that, you know, congratulations on your retirement, you know, you're a very, very great serviced person, provides good customer service to constituents, you have a really good temperament, you always treat your, the public very kind, and I'm not sure if that's because you've aged in that position and you've kind of mellowed out, but you do a great job, so congratulations on that, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Justin. I would just say, you posed some questions, and if you want to maybe give your contact information to the clerk staff offline, we'll go ahead, we can follow up. There is some information we can make sure we have available to you regarding the survey and certainly regarding the district-guided allocations and a couple of other questions as well, so.
Assuming he's listening, or I think we can at least address a little bit of the question around district allocations. You know, that was a policy decision by the board made several months ago to do a total allocation of $10 million in each of the five districts, that still meet the same treasury guidance and can only be used for the same types of purposes that the general, the balance of ARPA funds that is recommended by staff to the board. And there's a process for making sure that it's in compliance, but I think part of his question also was not understanding or questioning whether any of it's been spent, and I could sure assure him that it's been appropriated and is in the process of being spent. So it's just, it's a subset of the total of 300, roughly $300 million that this board decided at my request to assign to each district, so that we can kind of pinpoint and more surgically apply to different services and programs that, in fact, most of which, if not all of them, meet kind of the same intent as the community survey results would dictate.
Yeah, and I just, the reason I said, if you want to give your information, we even talked about it earlier in the afternoon of having, there's a list-
Right.
-of those things that have been funded through those allocations, and some of those actually, as recently as yesterday, as agenda were approved, but you could actually see how they tie in with homelessness, with economic development, with community reinvestment, with health and other community services, so we can get that to you, and then the community survey was actually conducted about this time last year, and Ann, you want to-
Yeah, so the original survey for the first phase of ARPA funding was conducted in June of 2021, and the budget priorities professional polling firm did that survey in October of 2021.
And that information could be made, it's probably available online.
It's public, it's, yes, it is.
Okay. But again, Justin, if you want to make, you know, your information available to the clerk, and I think Supervisor Desmond already had a note about Watt Avenue, so. Anyway, okay, very good, well, thank you so much for your, for your call in, and we'll try to make that information available to you if you give us your contact information, so, Flo?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and we have next caller, please. I believe this is your last caller from-
Okay, last caller, last call for last caller.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Chair Nattoli and Supervisors.
Hello, Mike.
For the record, my name is Mike Jaskey, and I am representing SAC Act's Homeless and Housing Committee. The SAC Act Homeless and Housing Committee recommends some major changes to the ARPA funding allocations from those presented to you today by county staff. Let me provide a rationale for these changes first, and I'll highlight a few of the specific ones that are in our letter of July 11th on the last page, table, the table on page three. The rationale, on June 14th, this board adopted a whole package of things required as part of the HAP3 application for state homeless funding. At that time, I said the local homeless action plan was the most important element of that package you adopted. It contains strategies, sub-strategies, and first steps needed to achieve the goals. You, the COC, and the City of Sacramento adopted that plan. Strategy 3B calls for an increase in permanent supportive and affordable housing. Strategy 4B calls for a broad diversion and prevention efforts to keep people from falling into homelessness. There's no more obvious prevention measure than a rental assistance program to those who are about to lose their existing housing and fall into homelessness. You've begun funding safe stay shelters that need more housing to make the rehousing goal to actually be achievable at scale. Thus, SAC Act recommends a shift in the mix of ARPA allocation toward housing and homelessness and away from the other topics to be consistent with that plan that you adopted and the issues you discussed earlier afternoon with the mobile home community. So our specific recommendations, we provided alternative proportions for shifting dollars from other categories toward homeless and housing away from other items that the staff recommended. Let me highlight three things. Explicitly fund permanent supportive housing and affordable housing development. It's fundamental to reducing homelessness. We offered multiple ways that this effort could be started. It's not obviously going to be finished with this amount of money, but you need to make a signal that the county is doing this. State and local rental assistance programs have essentially ended, even though there's thousands of applicants who've never received anything, the need is still there. Devote some resources to a county rental assistance program, and preserve the funding for Mather Community Campus project, whatever it ends up costing, and reduce the revenue replacement category to increase the funding that we've suggested. In summary, on June 14th, I said that L-HAP was a good first step in the direction that SAC Act has been advocating, a collaborative, comprehensive plan to end homelessness. The L-HAP won't be a good first step unless you use it to guide your funding allocations and project approvals. It doesn't look like you're actually doing that. Finally, please make a commitment to start funding housing to enable both homelessness prevention and rehousing of residents of unauthorized encampments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to Sacramento Act for your ongoing advocacy, but also, I think, your thorough review of topic areas and certainly recommendations and information you provide to us with your suggestions for how we ought to allocate certainly this funding, but also program other money, so appreciate that, Mike, thanks. Okay. Any other callers?
No, that's it.
That's it, okay. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If there are no other questions or comments by my colleagues, I'd move the recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, has been moved a second to-
With thanks to our CEO and especially Amanda.
Okay. To approve the outlined project recommendations, and then we'll obviously have more detail behind much of this in the weeks and months to come, so. All right, that is the motion, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, very good. All right, that takes us down to the opportunity for Ms. Edwards to offer some other comments.
Well, I just want to say thank you to all of you around this ARPA allocations, but I also want to take a moment, you know, you mentioned Amanda, but so many people were involved in working on these recommendations and proposals, and you have tremendous advocates in your department heads who advocate for the needs of their departments, and I think what you- what you saw before you today was a reflection of that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Okay, board members, anything here? Did they end this in? I see no, no one coming forward then. So we are just a little bit before 7 o'clock. Thanks to our clerk. Thanks to those who stayed with us all afternoon for the good work.
Mr. Chair, I actually do have something generally to say. In terms of the district ARPA funds between Districts Five and One, we'll be having some discussions, looking forward to some discussions with you, Ann, and probably Amanda, maybe even as early as tomorrow or Friday, about the use of the second $5 million in each district for various homeless, homeless projects and initiatives.
Yep, ready to go. Very good. Okay. All right. With that, then, many thanks to all who worked on this, and thanks to those who called in and spent time with us today. And we will now return. No special meeting between now and 26, right? Okay, maybe after that. So, okay. All right. So we'll next return. Oh, yeah, that's right. Reminder on the State Fair starts Friday, and a lot of good entertainment and offerings out there. So with that, we are adjourned.
Wine slushies.